I call to order the regular meeting of the Mount Pleasant City Commission, Monday,
Um, well, first I'd like to, um, thank the public safety, um, especially Director Loria for looking into this. I think this is a great way for the city to be able to adapt to the circumstances that are out right now and, um, that we are able to help our neighbors.
And I further appreciate that this is kind of based on a previous contract they had, so we, we didn't have to recreate the will.
Other questions? Um, one question I did have, um, was concerning, um, and again, correct me if my interpretation of what I read was wrong. Um, it was that opt, uh, officers can opt into these shifts essentially, like, um, the shifts are po, my understanding would be the shifts are posted and officers can sign up for them. Is, was there any, uh, if, no, if we don't have officers sign up for posted shifts, if that should come up?
That's highly unlikely.
Okay.
Um, but at the end of the day, uh, we have management rights where, um, if we enter into an agreement, uh, we could exercise those and, and mandate the shifts.
Okay. Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Zhang?
Um, that was one of them, and, and it talked about voluntary scheduled or hybrid approach. So I understand you're saying if it comes to it, we'll force our employees to work at Lake Isabella, if it comes to it.
I, I mean, we can.
We can.
Yes.
And, and we will.
We, we haven't.
If we sign this contract.
We, we haven't got that, that far yet.
But if this is written into it, this is what would happen.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, the, the, the city, the city, a lot of residents in, in our city, in fact, more residents in our city voted for the sheriff's patrol than in Lake Isabella. And it was clear Lake Isabella did not want road patrol for the sheriff's department. Why would we want to go against the wishes of majority?
Well, I, I, I think that this was, uh, Lake Isabella approaching us with their elected officials giving direction or, um, I don't want to say input, uh, but given direction to the village manager, uh, who then made the decision. As far as the voting on the road patrol village, that was never discussed or how they voted. Um, so this is driven through their board. I don't know if their board of trustees or village council, what it exactly it's termed, um, but it was, uh, something that the village manager brought to us.
But it is clear, the vote at Lake Isabella was in favor of no road patrol.
I,
well, I would say that's a fact, and we need to remember that the majority of voters didn't want that. But let me go on. Uh, when we say they'll pay for the, the wages, is that a burden rate? I mean, do they pay for their share of the training that we have to put in or for the, the schooling or?
There's administrative fees in there. Um, I do have a breakdown of that. Obviously, I didn't want to get too far into the weeds, um, before we got any sort of contract, uh, hammered out with the details. Um, but yes, there are, um, things in there that cover the total cost so that the city of Mount Pleasant and its taxpayers are not subsidizing Lake Isabella.
Now, the, you, the, the, Lake Isabella, as I understand it, is looking primarily for the busiest days of the year, like the holidays and so on, when that's where we would be looking for the same kind of thing.
Um, yes, but again, our, the, the memo clearly indicates that we would never, um, short our, uh, primary jurisdiction, which is the city of Mount Pleasant, any events that are going on in order to do this. If I didn't think that we could do this, I, I wouldn't have, you never would have seen this memo. So I would never put anyone, um, whether visitor, resident, business in jeopardy to service an, another jurisdiction. Yeah.
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 Well, same. Yeah. Vice Mayor Ecker.
Yes, so at this moment, uh, Director Loria, you are just simply asking the commission, all the commissioners to authorize you to begin engaging in drafting this particular contract. It's not, it's not a done deal.
That is correct.
I'm going to assume that once you draft this contract, you will bring it back to us to take a look at before you put your pen down or anything. Well, you're going to sign it though. I'm going to assume that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So again, this is just exploratory at this moment in terms of what the contract would look like or the various components of the contract.
Correct.
Okay. It will include, I hope, language that says if it is necessary for us to say no at a certain point, that we are going to say no?
Yes.
As in the days when it is busy over here and it's busy over there and you have to make a decision about where to go.
That's correct.
I, I, I just want to make sure I'm hearing you correctly.
You're hearing me correctly.
Okay. Just so.
Um, Commissioner Rollins, any questions or concerns for yourself? Welcome. Commissioner Zhang, if you're eager?
Residents of Mount Pleasant pay more taxes than some of the surrounding areas, and one of the benefits is that we have the best police force in mid-Michigan, perhaps in the state. This is a, a thing that I'm pretty proud of. I like it. But I am concerned that when we say, well, let's provide the same, um, service, albeit at a limited time, to some other community who's not, uh, paying the taxes that we are. Uh, and to your question, yes, they'll bring it back to us, but, but the first question ought to be, do we want to pursue this kind of a thing? Clearly, the residents there didn't want it. The board there may want it. The residents were clear that they did not want this. We have a police force that we finance and we're saying, well, let's share that. And that's one thing to share because we have reciprocal agreements. If they call us, we show up. But it's another thing for us to say, we're going to patrol their area. I don't think this is a good idea.
Commissioner Perschbacher.
Like I said at the beginning, I really appreciate you being able to, to adapt to the circumstances that we have in this community, and our community reaches beyond our city limits. We should be willing, and if we're able to, to help our neighbors. And I think that that is all we're asked to do here. It's not an everyday patrol. It's patrols during certain times and they are paying for that cost. We're not, we're not asking our taxpayers to pay for that extra. They're going to be footing that bill. And I think that if, if the city commission feels that this is, that we are not the kind of people that would help our neighbors, then I feel bad about being on this commission. I think that if we have the resources and we have the ability to do this, that we should be able to do this.
Vice Mayor Ecker.
I, I am thinking in terms of my comments about two weeks ago, um, related to designating Mount Pleasant as an international city of peace. But I'm thinking of how this connects to this issue of, you know, uh, growing peace in our community. I'm also thinking in terms of security, um, because in, you know, exactly, you know, also in terms of pro, the proximity of Lake Isabella to us. So we're dealing with a lot of security issues, and I do believe that if communities around us are not safe, and especially if we can assist, and, um, Commissioner Perschbacher is correct, that they are going to pay for it. So I'm not going to say yes or no until I see what the contract looks like, but I do think that it is, you know, the right idea to at least explore and bring that back to us so that we see the language. I do think that it is important for us to think in terms of our security and the security of the communities around us because, you know, if they're not safe, there's no peace, there's no peace in our security, in our, in our communities. So that is, you know, this is a good neighbor. I'm going to put it in that, in, in those terms. I'm looking at it, reading it in terms of a good neighbor contract or, uh, arrangement. So, um, when you bring this back, then I will, you know, decide which way to put. But until then, I think it's a good idea to explore it and see what it looks like.
Last comment.
Director Loria, did you have? Okay. Commissioner Zhang?
My last comment on this is, is I a, agree, uh, my fellow commissioners, uh, Perschbacher and Ecker, that it's a good thing to help other communities. And it's my understanding that it has been and continues to be that if there's a problem and we get called, we, like the other law enforcement agencies in here, respond to that. This is separate. This is different. They want to use us as a normal road patrol, and that is totally different than our being able to, to respond to them, to help them when it's called on.
The, the initial memo provided by village manager Wolf emphasized a visible presence. Um, I checked, uh, call, calls of service rating. It isn't a hotbed of criminal activity out there, and hence why I think he used the, the phrase of visible presence. What, what they are mainly looking for is, is exactly that. So I don't foresee, uh, us, you know, um, handling these major incidences. You will see in the contract and other provisions, because I've talked to, uh, Michigan State Police, who now is their, uh, primary, uh, service, um, provider for them, that, uh, we will be assisting them on any big incident that occurs out there while we are providing this contractual service if we're going out there. So it, just to give you an example, if, if there was, and knock on wood, a homicide out there that required substantial investigation, which all of them typically do, um, the state police would come in and take that over. In addition, if there was something active, uh, a violent crime or a need for backup, we're not sending a city car out to Lake Isabella from the city to go back up the contractual city officer. We're using the state police. And so this is limited in its scope with a desired number of hours per month. Yes, you are correct in that, in their busy times, i.e. Memorial Weekend, Fourth of July is, or maybe I, I meant, we're not going to have it in place by Memorial Weekend, Fourth of July, Labor Day Weekend. Um, yes, they do want a visible presence out there, which we can easily accommodate. So it isn't as if we are going to be constantly having a person out there. It's, it, it will be a set number of hours a month, um, a schedule worked out in advance. And, um, once their budget figure is either used up or they want to pause the contract, I'm sure that's what's going to happen. If, just for a little more clarity.
Believe Commissioner, Commissioner Rollins, do you have comments?
No, Director Loria had answered my question because we're not going to be the primary law enforcement out there as a state police. We're just backing them up. We're reinforcing their jurisdiction out there.
We would be when we're working on their behalf.
Okay.
But if we need backup or something along those lines, the state police then would provide that.
So we're going to be primary and the state police are going to be?
If, if it is a, a theft from a vehicle.
Okay.
Something very, I mean, important nonetheless. I'm not minimizing someone getting something stolen from their car, but something very, uh, minor.
So something short of a homicide?
Yeah, I, I, I mean, something short of that is hugely labor intensive.
Okay.
Uh, and requires, yes. Did I confuse you? If I did, I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to figure out.
Primary? What's that?
So my question was, my understanding is when they lost their road patrol, the state police were going to take over as far as jurisdiction.
Yes, that's correct.
So now that we are being asked to provide our services, are we going to be primary or are we going to be secondary?
We will be primary when we are working in that jurisdiction. So if they, if, for simple numbers, if they ask, if they say, Paul, we want 30 hours in the month of July, and they give me the days. We will be the primary for the village of Lake Isabella for those 30 hours.
Okay, and then all the other times will be the state police?
That is correct.
Okay.
And if a major incident happens while those 30 hours, while we're doing that, obviously, um, anything that is that major is going to need additional resources. We would turn it over to the state police.
Okay. Okay. Okay, I'm, I'm clear now.
Okay, I'm sorry. I confused you.
Um, my understanding is that when road patrol was ended in Isabella County, that the sheriff, um, did not sign a deputization for our officers.
That's correct.
And that means that we can't just go out unless we have said contract to go out and help others. I mean, we can go out if the state police call us out.
Well, you're, uh, there's two different issues there. You are correct in that the sheriff, um, did not renew deputization, uh, for the city police. For authorization for police powers, we would get that through the village of Lake Isabella, who would swear a sin. And then in conjunction with that is a state law that if you're working with, uh, another agency, you can use that agency's police authority for investigative purposes.
Okay.
So it, it, there's law already carved out for, uh, this, that's, that's been on the books for quite some time, um, but that's how that would work. The, the differences in, the, the differences is when the sheriff's department provided this limited dedicated patrol, the village also said, hey, look, if you have to leave our jurisdiction while you're, uh, doing this contract, we're fine with that because Lake Isabella was their pri, it was within their primary patrol zone, which is Isabella County. For the city of Mount Pleasant, the, the, the city would have to be burning down with mass chaos for us to pull that officer who is at Lake Isabella, um, away from that assignment. So it's going to be a dedicated car because it makes no sense for the, the person to leave and come back to the city to back an officer. We have, uh, Central Michigan University Police Department and Tribal Police Department. So it, that is one of the differences in that when we send a car out there, they will spend whatever the duration of the shift is in hours at Lake Isabella.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Ecker?
Okay. Um, Director Loria, you actually have addressed some of the issues, uh, at least some of the areas where I needed clarity. What I'm hearing from you is that at the moment, it is the state that is handling matters over there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
We are only going to be there on call when they designate that we be there, and you are going to work that schedule or schedule days with them. This will be part of the contract.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. You are going to designate a certain number of law enforcement, Mount City law enforcement officers there. Now, the question is, how many law enforcement officers are you going to designate to the city, uh, to the lake, lake at any given time or on any given day?
One.
One, okay.
Oh.
Just one.
Good.
Okay, all right. One on a limited number of days, not throughout the year, not every day, okay?
Not even close.
So this is just for the summer then?
No, the days they identify.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it, it, it will be year round. Um, the summer is their busy time, but then obviously when lake homes are, um, boarded up for the winter or, or, uh, I can't think of the word, vacated for the winter. Um, you know, they want property checks, uh, they want a presence out there. And certainly, um, we can do that.
Okay, all right. So, you know, at this moment, I'm going to wait to see the language of this particular contract because I appreciate the details that you have provided. You know, they have helped me. I would like to see the language of this contract and hopefully we'll go forward, you know, from there.
Um, I want to give, um, Commissioner Al Sager, if you had any questions?
I just wanted to say I'm comfortable with what you've been saying.
Okay. In that case, um, is there a motion at this time?
Okay, I move that we authorize Director of Public Safety, Paul Loria, to work with the city attorney to draft a contract to provide limited, limited police services to the village of Lake Isabella.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second, um, on this item. It's been lengthy discussion. I'll, if anyone has any final comments that they, uh, just comments on the item that they'd like to make, um, I'll allow final comments. No? Okay. Um, the one I, thing I'd like to say before we vote, um, is that I appreciate that we're able to do this, um, for Lake Isabella. I think it's a good thing for us as a city, um, being able to like, again, provide that service out to the county. Um, there are to other areas in the county. Um, it's, it's a, it's a difficult situation, yeah, that we've been going through the past year as a broader community. Um, the only consideration I ever had about like saying no on this item was the fact that it, governments and the services that governments provide do cost, they cost money. And the true cost that any community faces as they develop and grow is building staff, building a department. And I know Lake Isabella is a growing area, so, um, I would encourage them to just keep that in mind. But again, in the, for the time being, as they're looking to grow and develop that, um, I think this is a service we can provide. We can do it without much, um, disruption to our system. Um, that's been emphasized heavily by Director Loria, that there's no interruption to Mount Pleasant services. So with that, I'm comfortable, um, voting in favor of this. But, um, there's a motion on the table. Um, all those in favor, um, of voting to approve, um, the direction, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye. Nay.
Motion passes. Okay. We had removed item 19 at the beginning of the meeting, which brings us to announcements on city-related issues and new business. Um, Commissioner Al Sager.
Well, I've got a list today. Sometimes I have nothing to say. Um, well, first I wanted to thank, um, Director Moore, um, for the tour that we were given the opportunity to partake in, to, um, visit both the water and the water recovery systems. Um, and your staff that, I'm assuming they're the leadership of those different departments. Um, I was really impressed with them. Thought they did a really good job. Um, next I wanted to say, uh, thank you, and it's really to the citizens as well as the administration. But, um, I really appreciate having the opportunity to be part of the team that's going to Japan. Um, we leave Wednesday and we're, uh, doing a little bit extra in Tokyo before we get there. But then we're going to travel on to our sister city of Okeah, and I just think it's a wonderful opportunity. And then my next one is, um, last meeting, we had some people talk about the Indian Pines Park that's going to perhaps have some more, um, bike paths as part of it. And I think it'd be great if we got to go out there and look at it because those of us that were on the Parks and Rec Board before coming here, that was always cut out of our visit. We didn't get to go there, so I would like to do that. And then the last one is just a, an idea that as I'm reading in the newspaper about short-term rentals and things like that, I think maybe we should start to, um, work for a policy about short-term rentals.
Thank you, Commissioner Al Sager. Vice Mayor Eke?
Okay. I do agree with, um, Commissioner Al Sager that Director Moore gave us an absolutely fabulous experience. It's important to know what our water looks like, where it comes from, really. Um, I do encourage, you know, residents to actually ask for that tour because then you get to appreciate, you know, the water that you drink. Um, and, you know, they feel all the taste of the water of this particular city. They are doing an amazing job. Um, so thank you very much. I also want to say thank you to Director Biscona for Parks and Rec. Um, I don't know, I walk through, um, the parks. And if you have not been doing that, you ought to, you would see a lot of work, uh, the maintenance of our park. Um, there are new trees that have been planted. I told him that today and he thought, he said he didn't know anybody was paying attention, but I pay attention. And these new trees are blooming and they do make this landscape amazing. So if you love the environment or the earth, you've got to love these parks. So take a, take a walk. That's why we spend a lot of time, you know, it's for, uh, well-being. And we've been talking about, you know, uh, city well-being. I also want to thank him for, um, working towards the expansion of the community garden. Um, and you know, so hopefully sometime this year, they will include the orchard, um, that we have been talking about. Um, there are still plots that have not been taken, so, um, go get them. You know, so grow your own food. We're talking about sustainability. He has an opportunity to experience that and meet other, you know, uh, residents. So, um, and then finally, like, um, Commissioner Al Sager said, um, I want to say thanks also for, to the city because it is, you know, taxes that support, uh, that will support our trip to Okeah, Japan. We are going there on behalf of the city and I do hope that we will represent the city, um, professionally and within the context of a global sisterhood. So thank you again for making this trip possible.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioner Bershbocker?
Um, I'd like to, you know, it was a beautiful day today. We're going to continue to have some beautiful weather for the next, hopefully, four or five months. Um, I would like to remind individuals that are riding your bikes, riding scooters. When you are riding on something that has wheels, like a scooter or bike, you must ride with traffic. When you are walking, you walk against traffic if you're on the road. Scooters and bicycles must, um, follow the road signs, the road rules. If there's a stop sign, don't look two ways while you fly through it. That's how people get hurt. I also want car, um, car drivers, autos to remember that, that we do have walkers and joggers and bicyclists and scooter riders out there. And please be aware of them at all times. You never know when one of them's going to come up on your side. And we want to make sure that we keep everyone safe in the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Bershbocker. Commissioner Rollins?
I have nothing at this time.
Thank you. See, for myself, um, first I'd like to, well, let's see, um, actually first real quick, um, hate to put you on the spot real quick, Manager DeSens, because I stressed to the audience, I did not discuss this with him beforehand. This was just something that I remembered. Brief update on bronze statues, um, we had had some discussion. And again, you don't need to get too deep into the weeds of it and everything. It was just, again, it just reminded myself before I forgot, yeah.
So actually, uh, if I can, I hate to put Phil on the spot, but it was actually really cool because, um, we, we have some of the things we've been looking for. And so I just wanted to have Phil come up because he actually got shown to me today, which I thought was super cool. So he'd been, uh, working with Darcy or like our communications director on, on getting these things together. And we are very, very close here.
Oh, thank you, Manager DeSens.
Yeah, so it's, uh, it's been quite a process trying to locate, um, how these were made, um, in the past. And we have been lucky enough to find that. Um, we've had Larry Voorhees, who is a, who is a resident here, um, who helped make the previous ones, was able to, uh, assist us again. And so now we are reaching out to the, um, foundry over in Bay City that made the previous ones to figure out what that's going to cost. But we have the molds. Now we just have to figure out what the cost is going to be to bronze them, so.
If I could ask, um, the molds that we had, I know from, again, conversation that I'd had briefly about this, um, the molds were in the possession of a family member of the artist. Was that, I'm going to back my statement up and everything there.
Nope, not of the artist. Um, they, they just happened to be at the resident's house. It, he was one of the ones that helped make them, so. And I know there's probably a lot more to that story than what I can provide. It's been quite the, um, quite the experience.
I'm excited to see what you and Darcy can work up on that.
Yeah, yeah. So we had two pieces out of the 15 that we didn't have. Uh, one was a Vernor's bottle and the other one were the Bamberg, Bammerhouse keys. And we have both of those made. And then there's another one that was made too for this building. Um, but like I said, we're going to figure out what that cost is going to be and we'll bring it back to you once we get that. So what I have contacted is Accra Cast over in Bay City, who, who's been helping us with the other side of it, the bronzing portion.
Gotcha. Well, thank you again. I'm sorry to preempt any announcements that you were going to be making or anything. With, uh, the other two items that I had was I wanted to thank the, um, residents of the Mount Pleasant Public School District for, um, passing the renewal of the, um, of the millage. Um, funding our schools is a very important thing. Um, and I know, I know friends in other communities where that, where their millages did not. And it's, they're facing some difficult choices right now. And so I wanted to thank the, again, the voters of the Mount Pleasant Public School District. Um, and then lastly, I just wanted to wish, um, the delegation going to Okeah, safe travels. Um, I was not able to be a part of them. I'm getting married in October, which consumes most of my time and time off, so. Um, but I, I did send, um, both a formal letter of greeting and just a personal letter to, um, their mayor, mayor as well, um, that Vice Mayor Eke is kind enough to deliver on my behalf. But, um, again, those traveling, um, I wish you safe travels, um, and that you have a great experience over there. And just worked, again, it's our 60th anniversary of this exchange. Um, and hopefully we can lay the groundwork for another six years more. So that was it for myself. Let's see, Commissioner Zhang?
Isabella Bank, which is a great business to have in our community, is offering a Community Shred Day on May 23rd. You know, shredding sensitive documents. And so you could take advantage of that. It's a South Mission branch, limited four boxes. That's a good thing for our community and thank you, Isabella Bank. The, uh, other thing, I'd echo my fellow commissioners, that the tour of the water wastewater facilities was wonderful. I've been there before, but it's good to see such large amounts of new technology, uh, and a staff so dedicated to the work. And I didn't know until that visit that Scott, our employee at the water plant, was the top water treatment operator in the state.
Gotcha. Thank you for bringing that forward, Commissioner Zhang. All right. Um, at this time, we will move then into public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Um, if you would like to give comments on anything on the agenda or not on the agenda, please step up to the microphone. You'll be given five minutes. Please state your name and address for the record.
Elizabeth Brockman, 1117 Wondrow Way. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, on March 24th, I wrote a letter on behalf of 13 historic downtown business and building owners. In the letter, I requested that the city commission hold a work session during the second quarter to explore the possibility of allocating unrestricted funds for individualized downtown improvement projects, including, but not limited to facade improvement, fire suppression, interior renovation, fencing, signage, or any other individualized project to help revitalize downtown businesses. At the time of the letter, the city commission had just shown unanimous support for the Tifa district to oversee the funding of these downtown projects. And the city had just received $700,000 in unrestricted funds from the state for marijuana sales. In addition to the $700,000 windfall from the state, the general fund had more than $6 million in unrestricted funds. I submitted my letter to comments@mountpleasant.org requesting that it be read aloud during the public comment at the city commission meeting on March 24th because I couldn't be there. For some reasons not known to me, however, my letter was not read. In the interest of time, I will not read the entire letter tonight. But I do believe it's important to read the names of the 13 building and business owners to showcase the diverse group of business and building owners supporting this cause. They are, uh, Megan Blair for Artsake, Judy and Sid Smith, Smith Equities, Johnny and Riley Justice, Sleepy Dog Press, Nate Darrell, Bob's Barbershop, Alan Godley, Norm's Flower Petal, Kenneth Strom, Tie Jor Mac Mount Pleasant, Amy and Paul Fox, Grace Furniture and Boutique, Joe Fleming, Conwinski Construction, Helen Chase, Trillium Fine Clothing for Women, Kelly and Chris, Elmo, Walton, Max and Emily's Eatery, Greg McCarthy Downtown Drugs, Steve Raymond Salon Blue, and Lisa and Richard, Richard Swindlehurst, Table 75 Restaurants. Tonight, I urge the city commission to take action to fund the Tifa district with unallocated funds using the unrestricted $700,000 from marijuana sales and are part of the $6 million in the general fund for the individualized projects of existing historic downtown building and business owners. This action seems like a logical extension of the city commission's unanimous support of the Tifa district during a work session in February. At that meeting, the city manager explicitly asked each commissioner to vote yes or no regarding their support of the Tifa district. And each commissioner voted yes. A unanimous vote and a ringing endorsement for supporting the individualized projects of historic downtown business and building owners. As a longtime resident, taxpayer, and business owner, I believe incentivizing the current downtown, uh, uh, community should be a priority. A nicer downtown attracts tourists, event holders, and new businesses. And it will continue the revitalization already in progress. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
My name is Sid Smith. Um, I've resided in this town for close to 82 years now. And I grew up about a block from here. Um, I, I believe last time we were here, which I think was in October, we were talking about TIF in the downtown area of which I support. We own some real estate buildings down there. But I just wanted to make sure that, uh, as a matter of fact, I think the commission moved to, um, support the TIF and voted positively for it. And I'm hoping that that vote continues as you're going to be talking about it tonight. Uh, the TIF is a, a very important thing to anybody that owns real estate within it to, um, upgrade their projects and continue to try to better the area. Um, I mentioned last time I was here that you, you don't see a lot of parades go through Myers parking lot. I mentioned last time I was here that you, you don't see a lot of parades go through Myers Park and all that. But we do see a lot of parades go through our downtown because it is the heartbeat of a city. And the downtown has started to spruce itself up. We've seen a beautiful renovation at Isabella Bank. The old police and jail headquarters, we're seeing great improvement there. We are seeing improvement in the downtown. The recapture of those taxes are the dollars we're talking about here. And so I would love to see the city commission continue their positive thinking on the TIF for the downtown and fund the projects that will continue, such as shoveling sidewalks. You built a beautiful park down there in the city center with some of the TIF dollars, I believe. That's a great enhancement to the citizens of Mount Pleasant. So I stand here before you just to hope that you're continuing in your positive thinking about the TIF and will come up with the well-spent money to continue downtown's future. Thank you.
Thank you. Others in the audience for public comments.
Good evening. Troy Hicks, my wife Sarah Beauchamp Hicks and I recently purchased one fifteen and one seventeen South University. And I would like to say a thanks to my mentor from CMU, who is now my mentor in downtown business, Liz Brockman, for encouraging me to come up and speak tonight. We've appreciated the support of the city so far. And we would also speak to advocate for the continued Tifa funding and any other opportunities. We are very grateful to have received the fire suppression grant. We apologize for the big pothole that was in the middle of South University there for a little while. But with Ken Strom, we were able to get the fire suppression line sent to our building as well as their building. And we would just continue to appreciate any kind of financial support that you're able to offer. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? And I believe I got the indication from Director Moore that there's no emails, no one online. Let's see. At this time then, I will close public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Let's see. We have three work sessions this evening still. Is there any interest from the commission in a recess at this time?
Yes.
Gotcha. In that case, let's see, let's resume eight twenty. We'll stand at recess for ten minutes. First work session, which is a discussion on the twenty twenty-six, twenty thirty-one capital improvement plan.
Good evening, everyone. I am here today to help with some updates on the capital improvement plan. I did make a couple corrections to it. And I don't know how I turn that on, but.
It got talked to text going.
Apparently I do. That's fine. For the capital improvement plan, we did present this last commission meeting and we had a great conversation over several of the projects in there. There were a couple of updates that needed to be made to the CIP document. There were some fund balances for, the fund balances for twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-four available balances were updated as well as on page sixty-eight, there was a side note that was on one of the projects that was removed. So in the packet, there is some updated information on pages three through nine related to the fund balances. When I originally presented this, the balances that I pulled were from the beginning balances noted in the proposed twenty twenty-five operating budget as adopted in September twenty twenty-four and from the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty CIP as approved in twenty twenty-four. The number should have been pulled from the year-end numbers noted in the amended twenty twenty-four operating budget as approved in December of twenty twenty-four and through the BSNA software. It's my lack of familiarity with the Mount Pleasant specific processes, the timing of the next year operating budgets versus the current year amendments to the budget and the lack of the documented processes related to my role that were the main reasons for the errors when I reported the fund balance side of things. When revising the spreadsheet and working to confirm the correct balances, I became aware of several other capitals spreadsheets that were used annually to help assist with calculating both the remaining reserve and planned allocations for the reserve funds and the enterprise funds. I did not update, on this chart you'll see, I did not update the capital improvement reserve available balance. After becoming aware of the resources related to the enterprise fund, I started looking into similar spreadsheets and have not been able to locate the one specific to the capital improvement fund. The CI reserve is based off of the twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty CIP document and compared with the amounts in the BSNA software. I feel that this number is conservative, is a conservative representation of what is available in that fund for use related to capital projects. So I did not change that one. The reserve amount for the special funds of the storm sewer, DDA, major and local streets came from the amended twenty twenty-four annual budget. There was likely a project that was postponed or canceled that involved a storm sewer between the adoption of the twenty twenty-five operating budget and the adoption of the amended twenty twenty-four operating budget that caused significant increase in the available balances. Major and local streets increased in the available balances. However, the increase is not enough to fund a complete, to, it's not enough funding to complete an additional project, specifically any reconstructions that would also use the sewer funding. The airport fund is a proprietary fund that, and it was increased significantly based on the amended twenty twenty-four operating budget fund balance. This was caused by the timing of the receipt of roughly about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in tribal two percent funding for the operation and other grant funding related to capital projects. So this one did increase significantly for that fund specifically. For the enterprise funds of the Water Resource Recovery Facility and Water, I originally used the CIP documents from the twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty plan and compared it to the twenty twenty-five operating budget document for the numbers. With the discovery of the working capital spreadsheets, I was able to use the BSNA software information to calculate the available balances, leveraging the unaudited twenty twenty-four data in our system. The WRF fund was split between the Water Resource Recovery Facility Reserve and the Collection Reserve. And based on the distribution set in the spreadsheet, I ended up increasing the facility reserve and slightly decreasing the collection reserve. The water plant enterprise fund is used for the water plant, water distribution, and water lagoon reserves based on the working capital spreadsheet I located. According to the data in BSNA and the distribution of the working capital spreadsheets, the total of the fund was fifty-three thousand, six hundred ninety-one dollar increase. And I allocated that between, between the three fund items. Overall, the CIP was increased by just over eight percent. On table two, which is page ninety of the printed document, I heard that there was a comment made that there should be a comparison prior to, from the prior CIP documented, document to highlight the changes between the two. And I just wanted to point out that this table two does highlight some of those changes. It includes the changes for scope, timing of the project, and other major adjustments, including removal of a project. It also notes the additions to the CIP that were not in the previous year's information. This table does not include changes in the price that affects most, if not all, projects due to inflation, price increases, and general knowledge increase in the staff to better estimate the overall project. But I just wanted to point that out, that that was there in case anybody wanted to leverage that compared to the current approved one versus the one that we're talking about adopting in June here. So just in summary of the changes that were made in the CIP document, I did update the fund balances on pages three through nine. I took out a comment that was on one of the pages that was pointed out that shouldn't have been there in the first place, and I wanted to highlight Table 2 for any of the changes from the current CIP to the upcoming one. Are there any questions or comments about the CIP?
Good thing you can talk fast. I'd just like to, again, this was something that Vice Mayor Ake and myself were working on as far as acknowledging the.
The numbers.
The numbers for, from December 30th versus the proposed budget, which was created in September. So thank you for making those changes there. As you acknowledged, again, across the couple of numbers, none of them really constituted enough for a single project or anything. So that is true there. And looking back at past packets as well, I can track where it was, where the Capital Improvement Plan is using that proposed budget previously. In this case, it was the December 30th amended budget, which was held during a special session. And I think that was before your time, actually, with the city as well. There was just, because it was a special session, it brought extra attention to itself. And the numbers that we passed there also were associated with the proprietary funds, which had significantly more in them at that time, which, again, we can talk about the fact proprietary funds don't come into the Capital Improvement Plan significantly. But that's, again, the relation of all that was where this largest concern was for myself. And then Vice Mayor Ake, as we were talking about that. So I appreciate you coming back to the table and making these updates here. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Commissioner Zeng.
While you're talking, you might have to review that part again about the airport. And then you said there was 2% for operations. And were you saying that can be used for the CIP?
There are earmarks for specific projects in the 2% side of things that are earmarked for the capital improvement projects. There is also two $80,000 grants that we received for the 2% that were earmarked specifically for operations of the airport.
And that's not included in the CIP?
It was, actually. It is still included in that as it is part of the fund itself. The $160,000 is included in that final total of the Airport Fund for 396,000, or I'm sorry, for my, the 766,000, which was the $396,000 increase.
I was paying more attention than I was at the page, so.
No, you're good. You're good.
Okay.
Or still yours, Commissioner Zeng, if you have questions.
Just for now, here.
Other commissioners, questions, concerns, additional feedback?
Lauren, I just want to say thank you for, you know, paying attention to this because, you know, when we noticed the discrepancy, we both freaked them. Like, you know, so, but this helps. And, you know, at least it's not in one area, but it's, you know, distributed across various components. So thanks for, you know, cleaning it up and bringing us up to date. Thank you.
Commissioner Zeng.
There was all that money, it was like 35 million or whatever that was for the water and wastewater. And if we calculate what that, how that's going to affect the ratepayers.
That's on my radar to make sure that we do calculate the potential increases for the water side of things when I calculate the upcoming budgets. That is not going to be considered into the CIP as right now the CIP is covering projects that we will potentially have future bonding side of things for, which could leverage into this. However, right now, the bonding is not set in stone, so I have not calculated that part in.
Thank you.
Other commissioners, questions, concerns? If everyone's comfortable then, again, with that, presenting the updated numbers, thank you, Lauren. We can close the work session on the 2026-2031 Capital Improvement Plan. Okay. That'll bring us to the next item of discussion, discussion on Central Business District Tifa, manager descents.
Right. Good evening, everyone. So I'm going to tag team this presentation with our city engineer, Stacy Tewari. She's going to cover some of the project type stuff, which I think is really interesting that her and her team had designed here. But really, what I want to talk about is Central Business District Tifa to capture or not to capture. Our work session agenda, I just want to review some of the information that we reviewed in the past. But specifically, I want to discuss more of the financial capabilities and potential projects and programs. I also want to talk about some of the sample capture plans that the City Commission could engage in and then request direction from the City Commission. So just to clarify, my last recollection of our conversation on this, whether there is interest in some of the projects and programs that we had discussed that a Tifa could fund. However, the City Commission wanted staff to come back with some more specifics about what are those projects, what are those kind of programs we could do? What would that look like? How does that fit into the capture that we have? What about other resources, other sources of funding as well too? And so we'll talk about some of that in this presentation. So Central Business District Tifa, again, created in December 1984. It was amended five times for development plan modifications. This happens throughout the history of most Tifas. Right now, the plan currently expires at the end of this year. There has been zero capture rates since 2019. We have now spent down all of the funds from all of the programs that we had previously, which would be our fire suppression program, as well as our facade improvement program. And the primary focus traditionally of the Tifa was on street skate debt and parking lot reconstruction. It moved off of that and went to some more of the programming in more later years in the Tifa's history. Finances, so this is something I want to talk about because the slide looks a little bit different from the last time we talked. Based on the current taxable value of $24.4 million, I had a number up there that reflected $640,000. That reflected a total capture capability. That's the total amount of taxes that are within the district. However, if you recall, a central business district only captures on value after its inception. So in 1984, when the Tifa district was created, the value of the Tifa was roughly 6 million. So that 6 million's got to come out of the 24.4 million, leaving us about $18.2 million that can be captured. So again, the base value, which is roughly 25% of the total Tifa, cannot be captured by us. I want the City Commission to remember this as well too because we had talked about the idea, the concern about what kind of capture other taxing jurisdictions may or may not be able to do. You've got 25% of the total taxable value there that those other districts can't capture. There's also other millages that are out there that we cannot capture on. Libraries can opt out of this. Some other groups can opt out of this. In fact, the only ones that can't opt out of it at this point are the city, the county, and Mid-Michigan College. Of that $18.2 million, you can see here in the slide, it highlights the amount of money that is captured by each of those districts if you were to capture on the 18 million. So assuming if we were to capture 100% of the value that the Tifa could capture, that would capture roughly $300,000 of the city's money, $180,000 of the county's money, and about $22,000 from Mid-Michigan College, leaving us with a total capture of just under 500,000 that we could utilize. Again, I do note here the City Commission could even consider a partial capture of what's available here. And I'll run through that as one of our example scenarios. Programs and projects, we wanted to talk about that. So we had talked about downtown infrastructure needs, irrigation, electrical upgrades, and streetscape replacement. And then I'm going to turn it over to our city engineer, Stacy Tewari. He's going to go over the project that her and her team had designed in terms of some of those streetscape replacement components. And then at the end of that, I'll talk about some of the incentives. We had discussed the potential for infill development, site selection preparation, facade improvement grants, and fire suppression grants. With that, we'll get into the discussion on infrastructure. I'm going to turn it over to our city engineer, Stacy.
So we primarily focused on what the cost would be to replace the streetscapes in the downtown areas. We looked at the streetscapes that haven't been replaced in the recent past, like Michigan Street. So this is an example snapshot of what that new streetscape standard would be. It would be similar to what you see at the new town center with two-foot band of stamped colored concrete, new benches, receptacles, bike racks, trees. We are proposing to just repaint the light poles that are there now because after inventory by the streets department, we think that they're structurally sound and they're very expensive. So we think that we can, they've done a few test locations already to try to repaint those. So in these costs, we would upgrade all the electrical, but we would leave the poles in place and just paint those. And then estimates that we looked at would be between the curb and the building replacement, assuming that streets would be paid separately as needed done with Act 51 funding. So this is just focusing on the streetscape itself. So we looked at perhaps separating those into two major projects. It could be done altogether. It was just for purposes of discussion. But we looked at redoing the streetscape on Broadway from Oak to Lansing, which would exclude the section in front of City Hall because that will be replaced with a retaining wall project. And that estimate was around 1.14 million. And then the streetscape replacement on Main Street from Illinois to the county building is about 1.6 million. And again, that would include all of the electrical irrigation amenities, concrete. And then we looked at the other sidewalk downtown that wasn't streetscape sidewalk, just your plain sidewalk. And we thought it makes sense to replace anything that had a pay or a four or less. We're looking at cracking and heaving. So we took all of those areas within that boundary, and it was approximately 75,000 to replace all those sections that don't have streetscape that are just plain sidewalk. And then we also looked at the option of adding fire suppression leads and blocks where we don't have them now. And this would be just one fire suppression lead on each side of the road that would take it from the main and the center of the street out to the buildings. So the property owners would still, in this cost scenario, would be responsible for anything inside the building. But we estimated those at about $50,000 each for all the work to cut the road, make the connections, and then patch the road back. So if you did 13, which are the Xs shown on this drawing, it would be around $650,000 to do all 13 of those fire suppression leads. And then we also took a look at ongoing maintenance for the parking lots and estimated how much we thought we would need to save each year to continue keeping up with melon overlays and crack sealing and pavement marking on the schedules as shown here, based on what we typically see for cycling of those maintenance. And we estimate about $36,000 would be needed every year to keep up with that maintenance, which, that doesn't factor in reconstructs because we're getting close after this year, having them all reconstructed eventually. In the future, they would have to be done again. But in the interim, we would focus on the crack seals and overlays to keep those going as long as possible. We are proposing in the upcoming CIP to do work at Parking Lot 2 and Lot 12 in the future CIP, aside from what we have planned this year for 2025. So those projects would be additional 70,000 for Parking Lot 2 Thin Overlay and 56,000 for Parking Lot 12 Melon Overlay, which is Jackie Alley. Oh, no, sorry. Parking Lot 2 is Jackie Alley, and Parking Lot 12 is across from City Hall. And then I think this was back to yours. Yep. This was the overall cost that I mentioned for those projects.
Thank you very much. All right. So as the city engineer Stacy Tewari was saying, this is just a summary of what the cost is for the streetscape replacement project 1 and 2, fire suppression leads, and other sidewalk work to be completed. Your $3.4 million, and I believe on my next slide here, I just kind of rounded it up and said, all right, $3.5 million. Could break this into a couple of projects. That's another way of looking at this. Now, going to come back to the full Tifa captures at $500,000 could be saved and spent as needed, or it could be dedicated to a millage. So the City Commission could say, we want to go ahead and do these projects. However, we don't want to bond out for them. Let's just go ahead, collect the money. And then as we get the money for these projects, let's start tackling those projects. Otherwise, we could dedicate it to a millage. I'm sorry, you could dedicate it to a bond issue, and you could do a seven to 10-year bond issue where you take the capture of this district, you put that towards bond payments, and then you could do that, you could do those projects much, much earlier if you wanted to do it that way. Questions up to this point before we move forward on incentives?
Yeah, for myself, real quick, could you go back all the way to the very beginning? And I apologize, base value, the like Slide 2, could you just review that information again?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep. So our current taxable value is 24.4 million. That was the number I came to the City Commission with the last time, that being the total capturable value. But if you recall, the way that a Tifa works, and in this case, this one, the Central Business District capture, it's established in 1984. Those values are frozen. All taxing agencies continue to get to collect their millage based on that value of $6 million at that point. The capture then becomes for every dollar of value that is increased in taxable value that is increased above this, this is what you can capture on, and this is the reflection of the 18 million.
Yeah, so that, yeah, that 18 million is the increase above the 6 million. That was that. Thank you.
Correct. Yeah, perfect. So of that 18 million, if you were to apply the current millage formula, again, the city's capture is roughly 300,000. The county's capture is roughly 180,000, and Mid-Michigan College is roughly 22,000 for just under $500,000 per year.
Gotcha. So, yeah, if we, again, say we want to do 100% capture and everything on this, again, we would be bringing in that 500,000, just under 500,000 a year.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Zeng, you had something off that?
24 billion is now. In 1984, it was 18 million.
It was 6 million.
It was 6 million.
Yeah, that's how you get the difference between the 24 and the 18 is the six.
Now, while that was happening, isn't that the money that the Tifa was working with? All those years, they'd get the money and they'd allocate it and spend it and make those improvements?
You know, I haven't gone back and done a deep dive as to what all of the projects that they've done in the past. I think as I had reflected, and let me see, I think it was this slide here. Primary focus was initially streetscape debt, parking lot reconstruction, those kind of things. Eventually, the Tifa had started to do more incentive-based projects, the fire suppression grants, the facade grants, and those things.
My question is, isn't that money, you know, we've got 500,000 to work with, isn't that money already spent?
Is the money already spent?
So, yeah, my understanding, because we aren't currently capturing it, that that money is elsewhere?
No, we'd captured it right along. We captured the money. And look, we made an improvement, so there was this much difference. So we took that money and we reinvested it in the, in Tifa. The Tifa group allocated where it was going to be spent. But each time there was money available, they took the money and spent it. It's not like we've been saving it for all these years, and now it's available.
Yeah, in 2019, yeah. In 2019, we stopped the capture, though. And like, the remaining balance was spent down.
We stopped, there was, you need to have improvement over what's there, and some improvement, you know, it's, once the basis changed, now you're going to say, okay, but now we're going to add this much improvement. So we're going to capture that amount, and that's going to be the tax exempt part here. We're going to use that money to reinvest in downtown. There isn't, we hadn't been developing any since then. We've been living off the laurels from the money that we had before. And that's my question. Is that the money that we had before? Is that the money that we were spending? Or is this money that's been sitting there all this time, and we just didn't realize there was money there, and now we figure that out?
That money's been spent down, like, again, yeah, the balance that was collected previously, in previous years, yes, that has been spent down. And that was the grant funding for the facade improvement that was at question earlier this year and before that.
All the money from the Tifa. The Tifa collected money since 1984 when they formed.
Yeah.
And it got to the point where it just wasn't generating any new money. But we still had some money, and we used it up until it was gone. In fact, we even spent some money. used it up until it was gone. In fact, we even spent some money beyond when it was gone. But I, I guess I'm, I miss, I, I don't understand this page here from the standpoint of when we get down to the tax capture, the 499, 499,000, almost 500,000, is that, where's that money now?
Because the district is not currently capturing that money. So that money is broken down, as you see there, the city's capturing 300,000 of it. The county captures 180,000 of it and mid Michigan college captures the other 22,000 of it.
And that goes to our general.
They don't get any of it.
Correct.
Yeah. Yeah. The 297 is to the general fund then.
That's correct.
Well, this was one of my reservations before is that when we start either a full or partial capture that we're taking from entities that really can't give up that money. Right? And that's one way to look at it.
They have a, yeah, they, they, I think those entities want to keep their funds.
Yeah.
I agree with that.
So when I was talking with Commissioner Rollins, I said, why don't we just rename it and say Mount Pleasant gives this money? And we give it either from the marijuana money or we give it from some other monies coming in and we don't try to form an actual Tifa district. That's just my idea. I said, we would talk about it in Japan.
You're right that the money that others, in fact, some of our residents voted to to support like I Ride or something, and then we're saying, oh, we're going to keep their money and spend it here. But I think back, I'm still a little bit lost and that's where I could use some help here because the tax capture district makes its money that we can reinvest in the community, reinvest in the downtown based on improvements that happen. So this building's worth 500, they put so much improvement, now it's worth a million. So there's 500,000, that taxable amount on that is what we're going to spend and we spent it. So as it sits now, the Tifa does not make money. It has not made money for a long time. So to your point, Commissioner Alziger, yes, there are other ways to do that and it can be supported by the general fund where it's not taking from these other entities who are saying, don't take our tax money. But it's a decision that we'll have to make how we fund it. But in terms of the Tifa, I guess I'm going to, I'm going to need some more explanation to find out how that's going to support itself without doing the kind of things where we, the commission, the city puts money aside to support those, those businesses. In fact, given the choice, I think the businesses, they'd like to spend money for downtown, but they'd rather have the street department or the public works or somebody take care of the streets and they could use the money to reinvest in their buildings. Because that's business people are, are business people and that's good. And, but from my point of view, the thing that I need help on is to say, if we have a Tifa now and we say, well, let's continue the Tifa as it is, that's only saying that it's, we're going to leave it in place because it's not making money. And if it is, somebody explain to me where it's coming from and where's the money? And so if that's our vote, then that's to say, let's keep the Tifa and we'll figure out how we can fund it, perhaps other ways. But then it's really not necessarily a Tifa, although some people would say, don't get rid of the Tifa because once it's gone, it's hard to get it back and, and don't forget, the commission doesn't decide where the money goes. Once it's Tifa money, then the Tifa board decides that. But I guess I'm going to need some further help from the city administration to explain if there is money there, how much is it and where to come from?
If I'm, if I'm hearing this correctly, I just want to make sure. Right now, Commissioner Zeng, as you had stated, there is no capture in the district. As, as you would put it, the Tifa doesn't make money. That's correct. They're not capturing any tax dollars or anything like that. They have a 0% capture. So year over year, there's no money coming in. And now that all of the previous funds are expensed from those programs mid last year, there's no money going out as well too. What this slide is trying to illustrate is that the Tifa could be capturing roughly $500,000 in taxes and it could now start utilizing that money for the projects that the city engineer had talked about and some of the incentive programs that I'm going to talk about as well too.
Yeah. So again, like the, the, there, there's no like the fun, like because no funds are being captured right now. Again, the money is going out to these other entities, either part of it, the city or part of it to mid Michigan or part of it to the county. So like, like again, it just like that 297 for the city capture, essentially that's part of our general fund and everything. And like, are you asking like, what project is that 297? Okay. Yeah.
This, this chart is really saying, this is what happened. Since we started this thing, all we made all these improvements and that funded the money. But that's unless you're saying, let's start over and re redo on this finance and re spend that amount of money. But that's not how the Tifa works. So what we're saying is this is what happened. We made this improvement from here to here. We got all that money from it and we spent it. Now we have to decide, do we have a Tifa? And it, it, there isn't enough improvement in downtown to change from the, what it is, what it is now to make this improvement. If there was a vacant land, all of a sudden somebody built a big building there, wow, there could be like $5 million worth of change in the value of downtown, that would be a big deal. But what we need is, is that investment downtown to put money into it, the same as what's happening on Mission Street now, that keeps putting money into it. But short of that, I see our decision is to say, do we want to have a Tifa? And here's reasons for keeping it and not keeping it. I'd be glad to talk about those. And if we, and if we do or don't, how will we either fund the Tifa or help the businesses downtown? But the, the Tifa is, is not effective.
Okay. Okay. So it, yeah. So I think we'll continue to address those questions then. Yeah. Thank you, John. But yeah, manager sense or other commissioners, other questions before, just part of this before we keep moving along.
So I just want to talk about and revisit some of those incentives. We had talked about at our last presentation, the possibility for infill development. Developers could be attracted to various incentive packages, including grants for new development or tax based incentives. Tax based incentives, if we wanted to do something like that, would not require the dedication of the funds, but would instead reduce the total tax liability going forward. So obviously if you were to have something like this, the new development gets created. And if they wanted some sort of a tax incentive to help pay down their debt because they had excess blight to deal with or those kinds of things, that can be factored in here as well too. Site selection preparation, I talked with the city commission about this and this was something that I had modeled at the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. So it's interesting that they offer these kinds of packages to developers throughout the state, which would be site analysis, RFP, RFQ development, site design, environmental assessment, marketing assistance. These are things that typically come right out of the developer's pocket. So you can see why a developer would be interested in these kinds of incentive packages. Facade grant program, this is something that we've been doing for a while. The former program was funded to allow a $7,500 grant to be awarded to property owners. However, currently Mission Hicker DDA has a similar program funded at 60,000 for interested applicants and they go up to $10,000 per business. Then fire suppression grant program, former program was funded to allow, it was a matching grant of up to $35,000 in grant money to be awarded to property owners for adding fire suppression to their properties. So these are just some assumptions that we tried to come up internally and it's just sort of a range. Infill development could be anywhere from zero to $50,000, just depends how much we really want to throw at it. The kind of development we would want to see, those kinds of things. Site preparation, we believe about $15,000 per property and all of those different things that we could deliver on. Facade improvement, this could be anywhere from 7,500 to $10,000 per property. It could even be more. There are other cities that go higher than that. And then fire suppression and assumption at $35,000 per property. So then just to have a example of this, of what a total package would look like if we wanted to fund infill development of $50,000 for a single project. Site preparation, $45,000 for three different properties that we wanted to make that offering for. Facade improvement, six properties at $10,000 each being $60,000. Fire suppression, $70,000 for two properties that wanted to jump on for a total incentive package of $225,000 that we would need for offering something like that. Now I offer a couple of examples here. One is at a 100% caption rate, a capture rate of the $500,000 every day, every year, infrastructure debt service, $500,000. It would be about a seven to eight year program for the $3.5 million project that the city attorney had, or I'm sorry, the city engineer had talked about. So it would be a total capture again of all of that. It would take us roughly seven to eight years to pay that off. And then the total for incentives of $225,000 could come from alternative funding sources. I know we had talked about marijuana taxes, those kinds of things. So we could derive those incentives from those alternative sources. The one thing I will note though, is that even if we were to do that, we would have a very hard time coming up with the three and a half million dollars for the streetscape project. And again, the city has roughly, it's over $6 million in fund balance and that keeps us at a very healthy fund balance above 30%. However, if we were to then cut that in half and let's say, take our $6 million and subtract the three and a half from there. Something I just want the city commission to be aware of is that brings us down to a fund balance of about 15%. That's bare minimum. That's, that's what you have to keep in your general fund. Best practice really is 25% or better. And, and so I tend to would just caution the city commission on such a decision if we were to go solely with general fund fund balance. Example two, and this was to try to take this out to a longer period of time. So if we wanted to have as little impact on the other taxing jurisdictions as possible, but we decided that we liked all of the things that we've talked about. We like our downtown streetscape project. We like our incentives. Here's a way to do it. We could still continue to fund those incentives from our alternative funding sources. One thing to note about that though, again, too, with the marijuana tax, that's a variable rate. We don't entirely know what that's going to be. It has gone up, but it could come down in future years as well too. And so we'd have to talk about if incentives are continued beyond those years, should it continue to, should it come down? The infrastructure debt service, you'd be able to go for a 10 year deal and this is roughly $370,000 per year that we could pay there. That means then we're capturing at a rate of about 74%. So we would be capturing at a hundred percent rate. Those other taxing jurisdictions could have some of that money and continue to keep it if you were to set up a plan similar to this. And obviously there's everything in between here that we can discuss as well too. So the deal can be done a number of different ways. Typically I try to talk folks into nothing longer than a 10 year plan because typically after 10 years, now you start to have some maintenance, some large maintenance bills with the infrastructure that you put in. And at that point you want your, you know, your debt service paid off. Similar to think of it, I think of it like a car, right? I typically don't want to fund my car or have debt on my car longer than I'm going to start having these large bills. So I tend to keep that at a very small period for a car loan. You would think of the same way in our infrastructure as well too. One other note that I want to make sure that I have the city commission keep in mind as well too, is with the Tifa, the, some of you may recall, we've done these redevelopment liquor licenses. These are liquor licenses that don't count against our general liquor license quota and instead are add-ons if you have a certain amount of redevelopment within a district. You have to have a dedicated Tifa district in order to be considered for redevelopment liquor license. So that is something that we should keep in mind is that if we were to, for whatever reason, do away with the Tifa, we say, we're done, we don't want to capture and we just don't want to do these things anymore. We'll figure it out with the general fund, we'll figure it out with marijuana monies, we'll figure it out with grants or those kinds of things. It then takes away the future capability of establishing redevelopment liquor licenses at future businesses. So that's something to keep in mind, something we had talked about with staff as well too, because there's a couple of buildings, you know, former SBX, those kinds of things. I know there was a restaurant that approached us about it, but when they had learned that they wouldn't be able to get a liquor license there through the redevelopment liquor license process, it seems like maybe that's a deal breaker for them unfortunately. So it's just something to think about. So the general question before the city commission here is to capture and not to capture. And again, I, I think what I'm looking for from the city commission is just an understanding of, you know, do we want to capture? Do we feel okay about doing this? Or is, is capturing the money off the table because we're worried about, let's say, Isabella County? You know, Isabella County obviously has some concerns about funding going on right now. And if that's the concern from the city commission, we say, because of that, we don't want to entertain capturing, certainly let me know. But that's really the question that I wanted before the city or from the city commission today is just to answer that going forward. From here, what I would do, if the city commission wishes to capture it, obviously make sure that we have all of our legalese. There's public notices and things like that. So we're going to have plenty of work to keep us busy until the end of the year here to get this Tifa renewed and back up to snuff. If we do not want to capture and, and you want to have me go down a different route to try to fund some of these other programs, we can talk about that as part of the budget process. And that covers, I have a habit of jumping a couple of slides when I deliver some of these things. So that covers those last two slides. Any questions for me?
I, I forgot what I was going to say, I'm thinking.
You're going to come back to it? Okay, gotcha.
Oh, I, I remember now.
Commissioner Alziger.
Did you mention something about the MEDC and some of the projects they do?
Yeah. So up here on our incentive plans, I'm shamelessly stealing this idea from the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. You know, I, I, I give them acknowledgement because I think they did a really interesting one here. But this is a program that MEDC has offered to communities, to our, and I should say to RRC communities. And that is if you have a developer who is kind of interested in a particular piece of property, they're offering some assistance, some financial assistance as a partnership between the community and that developer to do some of this work. And again, primarily it's because some of these costs are right out of the developer's pocket when they're doing their due diligence on a piece of property. So it's a way of removing one of the barriers for a, a community that might not otherwise get the attention from developers that it might otherwise get.
And then my other question is, a few years back, when we were working on a developer that wanted to build two apartment buildings not too far from here.
Yeah.
What was that program called?
That was the pilot program we were looking at or the payment in lieu of taxes.
And is that anywhere near coming back again?
Actually, we do have some pretty interesting news on that. So I know folks from our housing commission had really good ties with some folks over at Mishda. If you recall, one of the issues that we had with that is the developers were having a hard time scoring certain areas within the city of Mount Pleasant, in particular, available properties that would be very good for that kind of a project because of its proximity to the library was further away. There were also some other nuances that were changed by Mishda and this would have been right around 2023, 2024. Happy to report back that Mishda has heard the concerns from our community. Our director of planning, Manuel Apobideau, who has been a, a great advocate on this front, also our housing commission as well. So it sounds like there is significant interest in Mishda in changing some of those things for our betterment. So then that way we would be able to score better, the, or the developers that are looking to develop in Mount Pleasant would be able to score better on that. We don't have the final documents on that just yet, but things do sound to be promising.
Thank you.
Other members of the commission who haven't, haven't had a chance to speak yet first. I'm sure you're saying?
The, one of the, one of the possibilities there was for the, for bond debt service. Is that saying that we would go out on, for a millage vote or the, the commission would just up the tax rate for the city?
No, my apologies. So just to clarify, what would happen is if the Tifa were to capture at a hundred percent capture rate, and that's $500,000 that the Tifa would be able to capture, they could put that against a bond. And then that bond could go for seven or eight years towards that, towards the streetscape project that we were talking about.
Now, at the end of the year, if we say, ah, we should have this Tifa and we should fund it at a hundred percent or whatever the percent is, then the rules for the Tifa would be the same. It's here's what you're at now and here's what it's going to be. And we talked about the, the MFDC working on, you know, development, they'll sub, here's a piece of property, we could do site selection, we can do all those things. But in downtown, that's kind of, it's not like a vacant spot here and there. So their, their, their tax increment is going to be more difficult. Now there's the infill that you spoke about, but other than that, I, I guess I'm still a little stymied on where the tax increment is going to come from.
So if we go back to this, again, it's base value, which was set in nineteen eighty-four was six million dollars. Since then, the district has gone up eighteen million dollars in value. That eighteen million dollars based on the tax capture up there would be five hundred thousand dollars that the Tiff is able to bring in.
Why would, why? What, don't you start from where you're at?
We started where we're at when we created the plan in nineteen eighty-four. If you renew the Tifa, you carry forward the ability to continue capturing on this.
And it doesn't count that we captured it already?
Correct.
Well, let's just do with that one as I ask my couple of questions here. Let's see, um, questions I had posed when we were having this question, um, conversation last time is ability to modify and change. So uh, if we, again, assuming, um, assuming we renew this year, it's for a five-year period, correct? Would be the intention there?
No, I think we'd want to do it as long as the debt service. So I think bare minimum, you would want to say eight years. On the longer end, you'd want to say ten years.
Okay, eight to ten years, gotcha. So um, again, assuming we renew, um, it's eight to ten years or again, whatever period we determine. Are we able to adjust our capture rate from year to year? So if we say like, you know, we have a big project that we need to, to fund in twenty twenty-six, we're going to capture a hundred percent, but then we fund that project, five hundred thousand dollars, and then twenty twenty-seven, we bring it back down and everything. Are we able to fluctuate like that?
I looked into this. I don't see anything that prohibits the city from doing this. And certainly the city had to have at some point because obviously we had done a Tifa renewal. And then at some point, we decided we're not going to capture anymore. We're dropping that rate down to zero. So based on the city's history of doing this, based on, I just don't see anywhere within the act that you can't do this. My interpretation is that you can. Obviously, I think if we were to get into the particulars of designing something like that, we would want to obviously have the city attorney just clarify that point. But from what I've seen, there is nothing prohibiting that.
Okay, gotcha. And that was something that I was thinking about, especially with the concerns, uh, like our partners in the county and then mid Michigan college, like again, county specifically, but again, if, again, five, six years, we see that they are in a better position, like bringing the, bringing in some additional dollars might not be as harmful and everything or hurtful in that situation. And it's also remembering that the downtown also does bring in value for the county at large. We are the seat of the county. We, again, bring in a lot of value there. That was my primary question of, again, if we could fluctuate. So again, if we set it, um, we could adjust as we decided. Development of a ten-year plan is, um, again, we, the commission can express what we're interested in seeing. But that ultimately gets sent back to development with the Tifa board, correct? Or it's the, the development of like whatever plan that they want to work with or?
Yeah, ultimately, it's got to be, it's got to be passed by the local uh, governing board. So, and, and right now, we don't have a, an active Tifa board. In fact, I believe a majority of the seats are actually vacant at this point. So we wouldn't even have one to establish here, but um, we'd have to go through that process, but it would ultimately have to come back to this board for the final approval to say, you know, yep, we're, we want to continue this, this.
Okay, gotcha. Other questions? Yeah, Commissioner Halsager.
Earlier, we, we, we wouldn't have had mid Michigan on this list. They've been on the list for just a short number of years, right?
You're talking about on the capture list here or? I don't, I, I haven't looked at the history to know if it, if it wasn't there in the, in the past, if it wasn't being captured from, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, it was Harrison-based and then we voted to approve it in Mount Pleasant.
Yep.
That's what I'm talking about.
Yep, correct. And whenever that vote took place, this became a village that the city can capture.
Before I start talking again, other commissioners who would like to have input or questions at this time. You were talking about impact, again, assuming a hundred percent capture rate. Um, you're talk, could you um, re-express um, your thoughts on impact of the general fund? If, at a hundred percent capture rate, could you go over that again?
Yeah, three hundred thousand dollars coming out of the general fund, general funded very, very well last year. So I'm not entirely worried about that. And if you recall as well too, we've been doing about every couple of years here, some increased uh, contributions to our MERS as well. You know, we, but like most businesses out there, we also suffer from the effects of inflation as well too. So we do see higher prices on a lot of things still. Prices are plateauing out. They're actually coming in well within our um, budget amounts, but still that doesn't necessarily mean that um, you know, it, we're not impacted. Um, we also have obviously, you know, wage benefit increases, those kind of things. It's hard to just predict, just to say, okay, yeah, not a problem. I, obviously three hundred thousand dollars coming out of the general fund on an annual basis that we would have to work with. But we have a healthy amount of revenues over expenditures every single year for the past three years that I feel confident that we can move forward with this. Plus the adverse that you have to think about is if you were to, let's just say again, for sake of argument, do a hundred percent capture rate, you're able to capture almost two hundred thousand dollars per year in new monies that we wouldn't be able to capture anyway. Regardless, we'll still have to do the streetscape at some point. And without the capture, you'd still be isolating the city's general fund anyway for that unless we wanted to do a, you know, uh, a special assessment's another way that we could do it as well too, though the city's not done those in the past for these kind of projects.
And Commissioner Zane?
Okay, the inverse of that is, you know, we say there's a hundred percent capture and that's also taking away the city's general fund money because we're not getting that money to the general fund. It's going to the Tifa.
Correct.
So the general fund is going to be short that amount of money.
Yep.
But you aren't worried because all these other things that you, you mentioned. But as a commission, we have to be thinking, uh, we're going to be losing that much of taxes. So are all those other entities who our residents have voted to, to make happen. They voted for an I-ride and they expect it to be funded, but we're going to say no. We're going to take that money and put it here instead of us saying, well, we'll delegate this much out of general fund. We'll shift that so it goes into a, a body that's, that we have no say into.
That's one way of looking at it. And one thing I just want to mention is obviously this is just within the central business district. This data, the city still funds those programs to probably several million dollars would be my guess as well too.
Yeah, Vice Mayor.
So, um, I'm thinking, okay, so we have the general fund, but there is also a special fund that comes from the sale, whatever we get from the state for the marijuana licensing. So how does that fit into this, you know, so?
Yeah.
Because we have talked about the possibility of using some of that fund.
Yep. And if we wanted to do that, that was just, and again, it, there's a number of different ways you could do it. It could be a hundred percent funded from Tifa. Or you could, let's say, and, and I just put this up here more or less to recognize um, that idea that the city commission had expressed is that maybe we should dedicate some of that money towards these kind of incentive packages. My thought is that two hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for the incentive package that we put up there, you could easily fund that out of the marijuana money and say all of our incentives are based on marijuana taxation. The Tifa capture would go towards debt service in these kind of scenarios. So both of these scenarios up here, that fits in. But again, you're also talking about more money that the general fund would not, would otherwise receive that is now not receiving. So I always liken it to, to the old adage of, of pie and it's, you know, you can take a slice from here, you can take a slice from there, but ultimately we only have so much pie that we can dish out. So um, it can be done. And certainly I will say that last year's take of roughly is pretty close to seven hundred thousand dollars, as you had said, Commissioner, okay? You know, we had only accounted to receive, I think, two hundred fifty or three hundred thousand dollars. So we ended up with a significant surplus from that program than what we had initially uh, projected to receive.
And you know, as, as I think of this, regardless of how we see it, this, it's, you know, there will be an impact on the general fund. Am I hearing you correctly?
Yep, correct.
So, uh,
So.
Sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, no, you're good, you're good.
Yeah, let, let me just wrestle with this. You go.
You're good. I think, uh, just again, from, based on conversations, um, correct me if I'm wrong from members of the commission, maintaining the district even without a capture, good, bad, um, if we, if we maintained it, there's a lot of legalese and documents that need to be drawn up, um, finding some direction. Thoughts on that? So just like maintaining that as a tool or again, like, again, foregoing the overhead and just letting it expire? I, I for one, I think, I think maintaining it, even if it's not capturing, um, again, for future use potentially could be, it would be a good tool available to us. But again, finding, uh, getting input from the, uh, from the rest of the commission.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, certainly.
And I, I tend to agree. That's, that's a possibility here. But now, come the end of the year, does, are we forced into the scenario that was up there, which is saying we're going to start all over again? From eighty-four?
We could maintain it without capturing. Um, like it would be, it would still be like, uh, as I understand it, it's current configuration, the current capture rate and every, or not capture rate, but like, again, the six million and then the eighteen million above that has grown since nineteen ninety-four, wasn't?
Nineteen eighty-four.
Nineteen eighty-four, thank you. Um, so we could maintain it exactly as it is, just for the sake of holding on to it if we so desired. Um. Yeah.
All right, Mayor Wangard, you're, you're losing me. So well, if we're maintaining it, you know, in, in a state of stasis, is money going into it or it's just going to be an empty contain, a container there that doesn't have funds?
Yeah, so.
All right, so I, I, I want to, you know, I need clarity there. What, what does it mean to maintain? My instinct, my desire would be to make sure that it survives. Now, when you think about, you know, maintaining it, maintaining it, and I'm thinking sustainability, I always think sustainability. What does that look like? Are we just going to have this empty thing that is sitting there with no funds to use just because we're hoping that in the future we'll use it or are we going to find ways of funding it, even if it is trickle of money that goes into it? So I, I, I think we need to clarify that because that's where I'm getting lost.
I was asked posing that question of like maintaining just to establish a baseline for the commission because I wanted to take the to, to maintain or not to maintain, uh, was the base question that was being presented, like maintaining or not to maintain.
I, I was to capture or not to capture, but thank you.
You're still answering the question.
So again, I wanted to just get that out of the way was the big thing. Um, capturing.
At the current level?
Yeah, just uh, what it is. But then capturing, again, is there interest then in capturing additional funds? Is there like? Yeah, Commissioner Rollins.
Couldn't we use part of the marijuana funds that we get from the state to fund the Tifa? Rather than waiting for it to capture revenue?
We, yeah, I believe that's supposed to be, uh, being discussed here. Yeah, we would be able to do that, um, the two twenty, or.
Doesn't it wouldn't even, we wouldn't even affect the general fund because it would be going straight from the marijuana to the Tifa.
Yeah. And I'd be support, uh, like, I'd be supportive of that, um, I think. Yes, Commissioner Purshbacher.
Um, correct me if I'm wrong, manager dissents. The, when we talk about capturing, we're talking about the property taxes that these buildings have. And instead of putting that property tax, either a hundred percent or seventy-four percent or whatever into the general fund, we would put it into another bucket.
That's correct.
Yeah, referring back to my citizens academy training, right? We would put it into a different bucket. It's not that we are um, taking it from someplace else. We're just putting it in a different bucket to allocate so that we can work on streetscape. And we've been doing this since eighty-four, uh, until twenty nineteen.
Until twenty nineteen, correct.
And in twenty nineteen, that money was still coming in as taxes. It just wasn't being put into a fund to help the businesses in that area like it does on Mission Street to do some of these um, uh, facade grants and things like that to help the businesses, uh, when we improve the streetscape, when we put up new lighting, you know, things like that, that improves the downtown. That money was being drawn, would be drawn directly from the general fund regardless.
Correct.
Okay, so what we're asking, I think, and as I said, correct me if I'm wrong, instead of putting that money into the general fund where it would most likely be sent, spent on streetscape and improvements and parking lot, putting it into a different bucket and saying, okay, we're putting this here, we're going to bond this, we're going to use this money to pay this bond every year, but now we have the money to do the things that we've been talking about.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to make sure, and then if we were going to use the cannabis funds that come through to us, whether it's three hundred thousand, whether it's seven hundred thousand, whatever, even if we took a percentage of that and put it aside in that fund and said, this is for um, grants, facade grants, waters or fire suppression grants, things like that, helping businesses downtown. So we're literally using the money that the taxes that the businesses are paying to give back to them to improve their space. Isn't that? Yes, it is. That's exactly what Tifa does, is it gives back to the downtown to improve that space. We put the grants together to help businesses get those grants so that they can improve their buildings and they can improve their space. So I don't understand what the confusion is about Tifa. I think that it is, um, I think that it's a reasonable project. We have, um, you know, Ms. Brockman came in and told us of the members, the business owners downtown that were supportive of this, that would like this. If they're saying, please use our taxes for us to improve our area, why would we say no?
And maybe I have this wrong, but I want to make sure that I'm swearing. We didn't stop giving, you know, the tax money in nineteen. We did not stop doing that. What happened was there was not an increment of, they made this much improvement, so therefore that separate amount of the improvement is, is, that becomes that amount that is joined to the Tifa as money that can be spent. There was no more of those improvements, and so there was therefore no tax increment. That's what ended the thing. I agree with what you're saying. It's good to give these businesses back some things, but it's right now, it has been and is now coming out of the general fund. And that's okay if we want to keep doing that. But we shouldn't confuse that with saying that we stopped giving the money because there was no money. The tax increment part of it, the improvement, it's better, the amount it's improved is what's set aside. And since there hadn't been those improvements, there was no money set aside, therefore it died.
If I can, I, I want to, I, I hate to correct that, but it's, it's not, that's not what happened. The city made the conscious effort to decide we're not capturing in this district anymore, and that's why they stopped bringing in revenue, the way there's no revenue for the Tifa or anything like that. That, i- i- the tax increment, again, coming back to my first slide here, it doesn't reset when the plan, it, it resets when the full plan expires, when there's just no more Tifa and we decide, hey, we're done with the central business district thing, we're just not doing this anymore. That's when it expires and that's when we can't go back and, and i- if you would, then if we wanted to reset it as you were talking about. All of everything that we have here that's available to us, which is five hundred thousand dollars of capture, reflects all of the incremental developments that have happened since nineteen eighty-four, which can still be captured by the Tifa district.
Just to make sure, uh, I was used to attend a lot of these meetings. And I don't remember in two thousand nineteen, a commission saying that let's stop, let's stop collecting this Tifa money.
Yes, we did. I was on the commission. And we stopped collecting the Tifa money.
Yeah, if you could get with him so I could see those because I don't remember it.
Vice Mayor.
All right. So what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that currently, first of all, Tifa doesn't have any money right now. There's no money in the budget.
That's correct.
Okay. It seems to me that based on previous conversations and a whole range of discussion about this, I don't see anybody here saying that they don't want to support it. Which is why we're having this conversation. No one here has said, we don't want to support it. All right? While some of us are, you know, are just beginning to better understand. While some of us are, you know, are just beginning to better understand this, there needs to be clarity. For me, be, without the background details, I have absolutely no clarity. What I'm asking is where, you know, how we can fund this and make it sustainable. Hence my question about the marijuana, right? So now, you know, I agree with Commissioner Perschbacher. So the businesses are paying taxes. But if that has not been collected since twenty nineteen, as you've indicated, there's no money there to fund, you know, mati- you know, to fund work in this particular area. The grant's gone. We've got to start, we've got to, you know, start infusing it with funds. Again, back to my question, if we're gonna do that, are we doing it at the current level? Whatever level exists, wherever it is right now. So we couple that with the marijuana money, then, you know, whatever percentage, you know, we have, and we at least begin there. I'm okay with that. At no time has anybody here said, well, we're not supportive. I want to make that clear. We are supportive. What we have to work out is how to sustain it. And, you know, what pieces to bring together to make sure that it is self-sustaining. So that five, six, eight years from now, we don't start this all over.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion.
Um, Commissioner Al Sager first, and then if, if that's all right with you. I don't have my parliamentary procedure machine.
So, so one idea would be for us to decide a hundred percent, fifty percent, whatever.
Exactly.
And then not monkey with it, let it build up. But at the same time, we have to create the Tifa board.
There is a Tifa board.
Yes, we just have to fill it out. So it's been act, inactive. So, yeah, membership has lapsed on it.
So maybe we need to just start with agreeing on the funding and what percentage of it, or whatever it is we're gonna do that, do. Without the funding, I don't know what the board will be doing. It's just gonna sit there and wait?
Yeah, um. Motion.
I make a motion that we, uh, agreed to maintain a Tifa as a district and decide later where the funding has come to, when the public has time to hear the possibilities of the things that we're talking about. Because six hundred thousand out of, of marijuana money, a hundred percent capture on taxes, these have some big impacts.
Yeah.
We're in a work session. We don't make motions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so action that, uh, again, summarize, thank you, Commissioner Perschbacher. That, that is correct point of order. Yeah, so general session, again, like we're, we're looking to maintain, getting additional proposals on capture rates. Um, if we do twenty-five, fifty, a hundred percent. Um, and then again, it, it's sounding like we're looking to have proposals to, um, use marijuana dollars to fu- uh, to set up a funding proposal for that. So I think direction, from what I'm hearing, again, looking around and everything, looking to close this work session here. Um, again, proposals from staff on using, uh, marijuana dollars to, uh, to put funding for grants potentially, um, other programs. And then also again, at twenty-five, fifty, again, at different increments, what would that capture rate look like? What could we feasibly do with that capture rate? Um, I think those would be good numbers for us to work with. Again, uh, anyone speak up if that sounds like bad, like, I guess consensus there.
The more I've been learning is I've been listening, I don't see any reason why we couldn't do a hundred percent capture.
So what?
Yeah, I think, yeah, the rea- the reason I, I kind of brought up these two plans is really because on, on plan two, it really takes it as far as you possibly could go. So I mean, really, what we would be talking about then is the difference between a seventy-four percent capture rate or a hundred percent capture rate in order to do the streetscape. And maybe just to clarify for the city commission, my thoughts were doing the streetscape on that actual task collection, because that's pretty reliable money to come in. The marijuana taxes could be very, very, it could be very variable, uh, in the future here. Which is why I would think that you would want to set your incentives based on that kind of funding. Uh, because you also have variable interests, you get projects that come forward. Whereas the debt service, you're gonna have that debt service every single year. So really, it does come down to, I don't want to, if I could put some guardrails on it, it's a seventy-four percent capture rate is about as far out as we could go in order to do the streetscape if we wanted to continue to do that. If we said, no, we don't want to capture, that's, that's, that's a different argument, obviously, but that's still an option that's on the table. And, you know, Manager Dissence, let's figure out how we're gonna do that streetscape without the capture. Or yes, we want to do the capture, do we want to capture seventy-four percent in order to do it in ten years? Or do we want to capture something higher than that, up to a hundred percent, which would get that debt service paid off in seven to eight years? That's really about as framed in as, as that example is going to get.
Question, is the question you're looking, is specific question you're looking for?
I just want to pick that out, you know, rather than coming back at another time to talk about, let's say, different capture rates, that's about all you're gonna see on the capture rate. And then in terms of the incentives, I kind of went through what I thought, okay, these are the reasonable costs for incentives to get us to the two twenty-five. If we take that out of marijuana money, we certainly have the money from twenty twenty-four's take, which was paid to us, seven hundred thousand dollars. We had only planned on getting two hundred fifty to three hundred thousand. So the money exists to set that up. And we could do that. It's just going forward, though. There's no real great way that we have internally to try to predict what those funds will be. I don't know how much money folks are gonna spend on marijuana next year.
Commissioner Allison.
Yeah, but we, I think we also need to remember, as, as we have heard from some of the business owners, they have their own projects that they want to work on.
So we could offer grants as money allows, essentially.
For the cannabis, um, we could use that for the alternative funding source.
This is a meeting about how we're gonna spend the six hundred thousand?
I think that kind of got lumped into it based on just additional discussion that had take place previously. So that, that, um, I think the marijuana dollars had come up previ- in the last work session as a possible use, uh, like this as a possible use for the marijuana dollars because it fell into this category. That's why we're talking about that now. So again, if we want to have additional work session on like marijuana dollars specifically, we.
Well, I think there are a lot of people who would like, fair crack at that same amount of money.
Okay, gotcha.
We're only looking at maybe an incentive of two hundred and twenty-five thousand of the cannabis money for incentives for Tifa.
Yeah, so working with this, I think, um, yeah, we can have additional discussion. Again, the six, uh, the, um, six hundred, seven hundred thousand, however much it is, again, fluctuates on a year-to-year basis. If the commission is comfortable with staff drawing up plans and we'd be able to review them at that point. If we have additional discussion on the marijuana dollars, we could even potentially ask some, like, someone from the industry come to talk to us about like projections or something. So that's additional like information we could look to solicit at a later time. Um, it's getting late for the end. We still have one more work session. Um, I would ask Manager Dissence, do you feel that you have sufficient feedback, um, guidance on this? Final questions, I don't want to leave you shorthanded.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just want to make sure, is, is the idea, I mean, what I had heard, do you want to see a recommendation? Is that, is that what you're looking for, something more solid?
I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I, I think, I think a specific recommendation that we could evaluate the pluses and minuses of, what staff sees. And staff gets feedback from business owners. So again, I know business owners con- uh, aren't hesitant to contact city staff on exactly what they're looking for. Um, but if you evaluate, again, like what's the most vital projects, uh, vital project of like what you folk, uh, what we'd like to do as far as infrastructure. Um, we could evaluate the pluses and minuses of that project, which might also help with our decision-making process. I think if we have that specific project in mind, if we want to say, let's do something else.
Okay. We're getting late in terms of time here because we're at May. Work's gotta be done and there are notices to be published by the end of the year. So I'll, uh, I'll communicate back to the city commission. I'll, I'll, I'll take this, what I've, what I've got here. And I'll look at some, um, I just want to make sure that we're mapping out and giving ourselves enough time to get this finished out by the end of the year. So I'll report back to the city commission on that and, uh, address what I'm being told here.
I think we could look to have additional conversation on this next month while it's fresh in our heads. So we don't have to retread a lot of the same territory and also we can just continue that conversation next meeting if we desire. Okay, any, uh, any final comments on this topic before we move on to the next work session? Thank you. Commissioner Dissence, or Manager Dissence. Yeah. Okay, next we're moving on to discussion on Epic M R A Workplace Climate Survey. So as we were working with this previously, we were allow, we were getting, um, feedback directly to Epic M R A um, from, let's see, I believe on four twenty twenty-two or twenty-two, twenty twenty-five, I had emailed out to everyone inviting direct feedback to, um, them. So I know they received some questions that were, um, potentially, uh, possible to include. Um, they had also gone through and they were aware that the survey was on the long end. And then feedback from us was it was on the long end. Um, and so they went through and proposed some modifications to the draft to that would shorten it, um, per the documents in front of you. It's on the very, uh, very last page, it's the notes from Epic M R A. Um, they feel confident, or felt comfortable that by including a number of uh, uh, several open-ended questions at the end, they could cut out the majority of the open-ended responses. So they could collect data points throughout, I believe, and then allow narrative, open-ended questions towards the end, which would, they felt that they would get workable data from that, um, by doing so. Um, I believe the three questions that they proposed, including in leeway of asking open-ended questions after every question. Let me pull up the right page. Double-sided. Their proposed questions to add on are, one, what are the one or two things that you like most about working for the city of Mount Pleasant? What are one or two things that you dislike most about working for the city of Mount Pleasant? Um, thinking about for, former coworkers that have left their job at City Mount Pleasant over the past few years, what would you say are one or two main reasons why they saw employment elsewhere? So those, uh, based on feedback that they had received from the commission at large, those were some questions that they felt could summarize, rather than again, having question one, rating something excellent, good, fair, poor, and then question two being, what is the main reason? And asking for narrative off of that. Um, I believe they cut out total, how many questions that they cut out? By cutting out narrative questions throughout the whole of the, um, documents, they removed twenty-four questions. And they've proposed adding three additional questions for a total of thirty-seven questions, which brought it to a much more comfortable range than I believe the total was at fifty-nine, um, was what it was previously. They also, as Commissioner Perschbacher had pointed out previously, there was a duplicate question in there. They got that removed as well. Um, right on the first page also, I think I saw some language that needed to be edited just for, I think they left a few words out um, to maintain integrity of the survey. We, um, or to further ensure the integrity of the study, a unique four-digit user ID number. End of sentence. So I'll point that out to them that they need to complete that sentence there. Commissioner Al Sager.
I just have a, a thought. There are some questions where the choices are excellent, good, fair, or poor. And then the follow-up question, well, why did?
The ones that are red are the ones they're taking out.
We're taking out all the ones in red?
That was the suggestion. Yeah, so in the original draft, it, based off of that, and I, I did ask, yeah, I did get a chance to ask Mr. Sullivan that question, um, of like, you know, why are we, um, collecting, like, like their idea behind collecting the fair or, like a potential narrative comment on fair or poor versus for all four. And they said, and their, their point at that time was that, like, in their experience, like, that's kind of more of the information that we're looking to get at. Um, uh, like in people that they've worked with the past, or organizations they worked in the past, they want, they wanted to know more of that. That was the reasoning behind that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but again, they, they're recommending, based off the length of the survey and the amount of information we're broadly trying to collect, um, to remove those and replace them with three, um, broader narrative questions at the end of the survey.
That, now it makes sense.
Any questions about those? Any discussion or anything?
I think probably, uh, discussion we had was whether to include, um, uh, employees who have left. Whether this survey would go to them.
That, that was part of the discussion. That would be the next point. I wanted to cover the primary bit, like the primary changes that had been made initially. Before we get into that also, um, I'd just like to go back to, um, question fifty-three, um, where it indicates, please indicate your job description slash classification. Um, I, again, that was something that, um, Epic M R A, uh, like again, they, I was a signatory to the contract, so they asked me if I could provide them with the specific, um, classifications that we had with the city. Um, I asked, um, H R for that and we got a very long list. Um, and then going back, we might want to break it down to more like division, like within the, within the city of getting like, like, I, I want feedback from commissioners also on that of again.
What was that? Maybe, maybe not, I don't know.
I think that if you ask them to describe their job, it is too, um, it's too easy to figure out who it is.
Yeah.
Right? So I don't think that that should happen. I don't think we should ask their division. I don't think we should ask what department they work for. I think that, and I don't even want to ask them if they're a bargaining or a non-bargaining employee.
Gotcha.
Cause I don't, there's a lot of things in here, um, that are, the, the questions are based on the individual's biases also, and speculation of what has happened. And I don't want, I don't think that that's a fair thing to do either. Like the, um, the suggested additions from the commission, I think that all four of these, um, are based on biases. You know, it, with a person.
What, what number are you looking at?
Um, it's at the back of the page, on page twelve, twelve and, no, twelve, twelve and thirteen. So when you, so I, I do a, um, I give an individual that comes into my office, what's called a personality assessment inventory, and I tell them, this is based on how you feel today. Somebody's taking this, um, climate, uh, survey, is going to go by how they're feeling in the moment, right? So if you ask them, well, this top management work, works to build an open and collaborative workforce, well, that day, they didn't feel that happened. Or maybe they felt it happened. Or, you know, to say, um, does top management care about employees? Number one, I, I don't like the words top management. Um, because that pinpoints. I don't think that's fair. I don't like the fact that you're asking them in the moment what they're feeling about the management. I don't mind the ones that ask things like, thinking specifically about your current, um, uh, position in the city of Mount Pleasant overall. How satisfied are you with the career growth and advancement opportunities available to you personally? That's a great question. This one, top management is truthful and honest? I don't think that that's fair. I think that that is pinpointing. And I think that we had already discussed how that was not what we were gonna do. That's why we did, we chose not to do a three sixty review, because a three sixty review, when we did it years ago, when I was first on the commission, it turned out that people just bashed their management. That's all they did. And it wasn't fair to management because management was doing their job. And the employee at that moment didn't feel like they were, because they were having a bad day or they were having a, a rough moment. We all have biases. And if you ask somebody to in, in, to take their biases and put it on paper, they're going to go with what's happening in that moment. And it's not going to be accurate. Um, I don't like the, um, the question of thinking of, from for, about former coworkers who have left the job over the past few years, what would you say are the two, one or two main reasons for they sought employment? Are we asking them to speculate that? I mean, that doesn't make any sense. I'm asking, so, you know, Mary Jane left and, um, I think she just didn't feel comfortable. But do I know? Have I asked her? No, I'm just speculating in that moment. And I don't think that that is, some of these questions will skew the true results.
So talking about that, I do want, um, a couple of points. Um, I do want to say I take your concern, the concern about anonymity very seriously. So yes, um, and that's something that's chief amongst, uh, like amongst this and that Epic M R A is stressing. Um, in their contract, again, they will not share the specific results and the basis for their services.
Then they don't need that.
No, no, I, uh, the basis for their services is that. No, no, I, the basis for their services is that under, they will not be sharing like this or any information that would indicate a specific individual or be identifiable in that way. So that, that's like the base of their service. So just wanting to stress for anyone following along. We're not trying to find like a specific person and be able to like, well, you said, we know that it was based on your survey. Yeah. So just stressing that, wanting to put that out there. My, again, coming back to, again, the discussion on question fifty three, indication of job description, classification. The initial list that I, that I looked at and everything as I was just burying it back to Epic M R A, it was way too specific. Like again, we have, we have some departments and some positions where there is only one person in the whole organization works in that position. So it wouldn't make sense. I, my question about division though, is like if we did something as far as again, finding that division is we could potentially get feedback about and even bargaining units of like, again, we're, we went through negotiations, like again, our feedback we're getting like one way or the other, is it based off of like, well, we just had negotiations? So now we can say that like, you know, bad sentiment that we might be picking up on is because we just went through negotiations or is it from something else? And that, like, I guess, and like, I'm, I'm not asking, like, I'm just creating that dialogue of like, that's, that's my perception of like, how that information could be utilized or how potentially Epic M R A could bring that back to us.
But what if we ask, are you full-time, part-time or seasonal? And how many years, zero to five, five to ten, have you worked for the city? Instead of asking for the description. Instead of asking if they're bargaining or non-bargaining.
Gotcha. And I think years of service is in here somewhere. So we do have. Let's see, I believe we had years of service. We had age, education.
I don't think there's years of service.
I really thought there was. Okay.
I just think that the danger of, you know, I, I mean, to a point, I agree with first worker, you know, Commissioner Perschback about. You know, the danger of asking, you know, for specific, you know, work units, because especially if, you know, one person does a particular identifiable job, you know who it is. Or, you know, and, and then of course, for the people completing it, that makes it almost no worrisome for them.
Yes, they will.
They'll worry about completing it. So they won't complete it. And then of course, you know, we won't get the, the answer that they, they, the information we need. Yeah. So, you know, uh, yeah, sort of general questions about your, your tenure, how long you've been working for this place?
Question fifty five, how many years have you been employed with the city of Mount Pleasant then?
Yeah, it's here. I thought I saw that too.
And that's fine, but I don't like the description or the bargaining, non-bargaining, because that in itself will tell you how vested they are in the, the city.
Okay.
Have they been here for two years? And they don't like, you know, they're upset about something, cool. But if they've been here for 10 years and they've upset about something, okay, what is this?
Commissioner Zhang, I believe you had some.
Yeah, I just on that, and there's a bunch of these, wherever you things help identify a person. And if it, if they become reluctant to fill it in, then it's, that doesn't help the survey. But the good thing about it is it's not like those things online that won't let you go to the next question until you answer this one. If the employee doesn't answer those, there's no penalty. That person says, I think they're going to tell who I am because I'm the only person here who's over sixty five. So, or something like that. So they just don't answer the question. As long as that's an opportunity, then those kinds of questions back the whole thing is, is less important.
And to your point also, that is correct. All of these questions are designed to be optional. So if someone doesn't want to respond to it, they are able to skip over it. So if there's a question that they're uncomfortable with, they would be able to do that as well.
So what are they going to? What is the limit of unanswered? That they will, that they will say this survey is no longer valid.
That's a great question. And my.
Because we have that in every survey or every testing protocol that I use, there is a level of if you get to this many unanswered, it's no longer valid.
Well, these are ones that help identify the person.
Yeah, but I'm even talking about the rest of them. How many do they decide they don't, you know, is it two, it's a five, if it's ten? You know, I want to understand that too. I want to know the validity of this.
Okay, gotcha.
I mean, I, I, I think, yeah, I mean, the the purpose of the survey is not coercion, right? You're not going to force them to answer it. Somebody might get the survey and decide, I don't have time to do this. Way too many questions. I don't really, you know, want to address this. So I think it's to encourage them to do that. There are certain questions here. So regarding, I, I, I want to be a bit focused on this. Regarding those four questions that we're talking about at the end, some of the questions here are already addressed that say, for instance, around twenty two, twenty three, twenty five, for instance, asks about your, your immediate supervisor. You know, and, and you know, who you report to. So, you know, so you can use that question to elicit the kind of response you want. If, if the goal is to find out whether, you know, the immediate supervisor or at the administrative level, whether people are getting the kind of information or support they, they, they need, you know, that's where you can place that. You know, you might even put something where I say, is there anything else you want to add? Let them add it there. In that way, you're not you know, sort of saying, hey, I want you to answer these questions specifically the way I want, I want to frame it. I mean, regardless of how we see this, it's going to be, you know, there is always bias in every survey. There's no survey that is really, you know, seriously objective. I don't know what's objective. It, you know, it's all surveys are biased.
Yeah. But why add to questions in there that will definitely pull bias?
Yeah, I'm, I'm not disputing you. I'm just simply saying, you know, you can get that information you were dealing with in other places. Yeah, there are other questions that address that, you know.
Commissioner Zhang.
These questions aren't biased. We're asking that employee to give us their opinion. It's their opinion, not ours. If, if it's something that they had a bad day on and they're feeling that way and they fill the survey in, that's their, they're telling us. It's not biased. It's their opinion. Now, to the things that Commissioner Eke talked about, the questions at the back are different from the ones when you ask about the supervisor and the top management. Those are two separate categories.
But your supervisor might be part of top management. How are we defining top? I'm not really, what, all I'm trying to say is that there are also questions in here that address the same questions that we're asking at the other end, unless you want to, I mean, top management supervisor. From the point of view of the person who is not top management or supervisor, top management supervisor is top management.
No, top management is top management, but supervisor isn't top management.
Defining top management.
That manager sits right here, supervisor sits down there.
Well, then in that case, you might just as well say, you know, city manager.
Well, that's okay. That's okay.
Around the words.
That's okay to say that.
Yeah, then say that, you know, if you want to, if the question is about the city manager, ask that. I don't like obfuscating things. Let's get to the point of what we're trying to, you know.
Well, this Epic M R A designs these things and figures out how to find information that'll help us, which is what we ask them to do. Now, I'm not opposed to saying define the person, but I think if you say this, people are going to write things based on their interpretation, which may not be what, what we had in mind. But it's pretty clear that if we want to find the, the pulse of the employees, the past employees, then we need to ask the questions.
Well, then let's say, tell Epic M R A, you know, that it might be useful to define or at least put an asterisk somewhere, put notes somewhere to say, this is what we mean by top management, because the way I'm looking at top management, anybody who is not me working at the, you know, at a particular level is top management. I report to them whether directly or indirectly. That's how I'm looking at this. So let's clarify this. The other thing that I'm also saying here is, you know, they, they can provide, I realize that they've taken, taken out some of the narrative section. You know, just simply short section somewhere that says, explain, you know, sort of provide some.
And I think at the end on page twelve, they would, it's not labeled as a question. I think this is designed around a, as if you had a hard copy. Please feel free to use the space below to add comments about any topics that you know, were not covered in the survey. So with incorporate if yeah, page tw- yeah, top of page twelve, if that, we ensure that that's added in there, that opens up for an individual to just give feedback on their own about something that they're passionate about. And if it lines up with other individuals or giving responses, then that's when it becomes more vital. If one person's talking about a bad day that they had, it's not going to be something that Epic M R A is going to take as much consideration to. They're looking for trends amongst all the respondents. So they're going to be able to look at a survey and say, you know, no, this isn't something that's as significant. Yes, we can say that someone really did have a bad day that day, but they, we are not seeing that same theme play out across other surveys. If one person talks about like, there is terrible communication and gives us a five-page response. But then that theme is also echoed out in shorter responses. That's still maybe their bias. That might be their personal opinion, but it's looking for trends amongst how they play out. So a, again, that's where the fear is over concern of getting someone's biased response. It's, we're looking for everyone's biased response and pulling themes from that. So that, that's where, like, again, as we're talking about potential bias by a single respondent. It doesn't seem as weighty to me, like, and again, I've not I'm not a professional in the industry, but like, that's where it's.
It's how you worded the question.
Yeah.
If you say top management, you're asking them to pinpoint somebody that they may or may not like. Regardless, regardless, if they, if that person ever has contact with them directly. Because there are people in departments around here that do not ever have contact with our city manager. But they may hear scuttle from other ways. So what you're doing is you're asking somebody to say, I want you to pinpoint this person directly. And tell me what you think of them. And I thought that when we decided to do this, we were not going to do that. That's why we decided not to do a three sixty because of the attacks on management the last time we did a three sixty. I thought that we were, we had said many times, even Vice Mayor Eke had said, we are not attacking the city manager. This is not about the city manager. Then why are we putting questions in here about top management?
Well, I think these questions are in here because a member of the commission had submitted them to Epic M R A.
But it does not mean that we have to agree with them.
And that's correct. That's what it is part of, but it is again, a member of the commission had submitted them. So without bias, they are included for review here. That, that is what is going on here.
I think you understand what my, what my feeling is of these four questions.
And yeah, you're, you're feeling there, your feeling there is, is taken. And again, we've had conversation about this ourselves and I understand your concerns there. So my question again, if any of these questions were to be included, do you, do you feel that creating? Because again, there is responsibility of organization and management within the organization of talking about something as, as far as like senior management team, for example. There are a broad group of, a broad group that has control and again, is in charge of communicating throughout the organization. So when I, when I read the questions that had been submitted of top management, I took it more as senior management team, again, because that's where a lot more people interact, because again, they have someone in there who's attached to their, their unit.
Maybe a better word would be your, your supervisor.
But those questions are already answered.
Yeah, yeah. Twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, all through twenty something, those questions address, you know, the people in supervisory roles, they are there. You can just simply maybe just add, add, you know, that section again to say, hey, is there anything that we, that we have not covered here that you would like to cover? And let, or that you'd like to address, let them address that. Or you expand the question about the supervisory position. Depending on who this goes to, who is responding to it. Ultimately, somebody is going to say something about their supervisor or add something more. Okay? The way I see this is I, there is no way, no way that you are going to clean this of some kind of bias. All surveys by virtue of what they are are biased.
Yes, but we don't lead them.
Well, I'm not saying lead them. I'm, you know, again, I've worked with, I've done surveys. Yeah, you can't have, you know, a, a, a survey tool that is flawed. And I think what we're trying to do is to make this less flawed. All of them are flawed by somehow. And then of course, you know, and, and I think, you know, you want to protect the integrity of the process. You know, and, and, and you also want to give people opportunity to say whatever it is that's been, you know, driving them, keeping them from sleeping, getting them upset, you know? So, um, or, or believing that there is an exodus of people leaving or something is amiss and they can't figure out what it is. So I, I, I.
Let me make a question here. So I'm going to put here, those other questions at twenty two, twenty two, those are about supervisors. And that's good because that's how we get to find out where their issues are, where they're at. But if we find out if it's not there, we need to find out there's an expression, the buck stops here. That's top management. We need to ask the questions to find out if that's a problem. If it's not a problem, it's not a problem. Employees are going to tell us that. You know, this is why we're doing a survey. We shouldn't fool ourselves is to say, let's make this thing so it's going to say what we want it to say or don't say. Ask everybody the questions, figure out if there's a problem. If there's no problem, then we're happy.
Let's see. So I guess that, that's a good question then of putting, putting to Commissioner Perschbacher. Talking about leading is a concern there. Is there a way, a way to ask questions, like again, looking at the four questions that were presented from a member of the commission? Is there a way to, that you think you could distill down those questions?
By the way, top management would include us, just so you know, they could also say the commission is top management since, you know.
I wouldn't find a question about that at all.
Then, you know, all I'm saying is Epic M R A can just put an asterisk in there and say, anybody, anybody above your supervisor or immediate, you know, do you want to do that?
No.
Is that what you're asking?
I think they can ask, we want to ask a question, is it, is it beyond the administration? Is it the commission that's causing a problem? Then that's, that's a fair question, but you should, you should separate them out so you can find out the levels. And if it's this level, ask that question. If it's a level below us, if it's a level below that, we've got the level below that. So if we're talking about the two upper levels, we should include those.
Yeah, then go ahead and ask that. Is the problem, you know, the commission? Or, you know, or you're talking about the, the, you know, city manager? Then let's do that. So you have everybody covered.
These are not unreasonable questions for any survey, and I've been affiliated with a lot of surveys.
Or just simply ask a general question, where do you, where do you, you know, based on your knowledge of your workplace and your experience in your workplace? Where is the problem for you? What is it? Yeah, for you. Where, yeah.
And I think, I think that would probably be covered well by the questions on page fourteen, the open-ended.
Where is the problem for you?
Gotcha. Is there any, as we're talking about this, again, I think the, there was an objection from Commissioner Perschbacher about the third question amongst the suggested questions, which was.
Asking for information they may not know.
Gotcha.
Yeah, ask, asking them basically to say, what do you think the main reasons are for somebody who has left?
Yeah, I don't think they should be speculating.
Yeah, and I think that's speculation.
Yeah, you can't just speculate about why somebody left.
I don't mind the other two. I think that those are fine. I think that they have been, they've been asked in other areas, you know.
I think it's giving the narrative.
Yeah, but giving the narrative. I do. I have no problem with asking, are all employees? All employees are treated equally regardless of gender. I have no problem with that. I just do not like the words top management on three of the questions that have been submitted by someone on the commission.
This is, that, page thirteen.
Yeah, I'm using, oh, yeah, here it is again.
So, um, again, on that, again, working collaboratively, your thoughts on like, again, taking those three questions into consideration, how?
I think that what Vice Mayor Eke said was that saying, where do you, if there is a problem that you see, where do you feel it is coming from, stemming from? I think that's fine. I do not want to, I mean, that would be like saying, if you're a police officer, tell me how you feel about Director Gloria. I do not want to, I mean, that would be like saying, if you're a police officer, tell me how you feel about Director Gloria.
We're surveying the police department, that'd be an adequate question.
Well, but I don't think that would be an adequate question.
Ask them to be more specific.
If there is a problem, if you see a problem within your department or within the city, where is it stemming from?
Already identified there's a problem. All these people are leaving, so we need to figure out how come, what, what's.
Well, but the thing is, I know that you think that there's a lot of people that have left and there have been, and a lot of them were seasonal. There were some people that chose, um, jobs in areas that were, um, closer to their home or closer to their family. I think that whenever you change management, there is always a turnover of individuals. I know that when I purchased the practice that I own now, I had a turnover of a few individuals. It happens. I'm not so worried about that as much as I am, how are the people that are working here right now feeling about being supported in, in their job? I don't want to have, like I said, I don't want the description. I don't want the bargaining or non-bargaining. That already lists the years. I think you should ask if they're part-time or full-time. And on the describe your gender, man and woman is not a gender, it's male and female. So I'd like that corrected. I don't know if that was corrected on the page you guys have.
Are you advocating, do we get rid of those earlier questions about the supervisor too?
No.
No.
Because that's different. When you say top management, you're pointing to the top of the, which could be the commission or it could be where the.
It's both commission and.
And so if we, if we had a city commission, that'll resolve this one and us.
I'm okay. Add all of them, so so that we have a comprehensive survey. Put everybody in there. I'm fine with that. I don't think we should be afraid. Listen, we want to get information that we're going to use to fix whatever it is that's ailing us. I don't know what it is. I need that information. I need to know what it is. So let it come, we look at it, you know, and figure out what in the world is going on. I don't think we should be afraid to look at, yeah, good or bad. I don't think we should be afraid to look at it, you know?
Perhaps we can add then the question then, is it, is the city commission a problem? And if so, please describe.
Whole series there.
Maybe ask, does, do you feel that the city commission supports you as staff?
There's nothing wrong with looking at ourselves.
Exactly.
I think that that is fine because of, you know, because it's for all of us. But I don't, because we're putting this together, we did not ask Aaron to put this together. We decided to put this together.
It's not about Aaron. Here's the problem. We cannot look at this. I don't know how we're going to look at this climate survey or we're going to do this climate survey effectively where somebody is not going to talk about Aaron or talk about us.
Think we should point it out.
I am not saying point it out, just put everybody there so that it's equitable, all right? You know, city manager, the commission, we are equally responsible and accountable. They are, you know, they are directors. I don't know who, you know, let them say what we need is to get information from, you know, people who believe that somehow we have not listened to them. Right? That they haven't, we have, we have not heard them. I want to know, I, I, you know, I'd like to hear them. And I don't want to worry about what they're going to say or not say, and in doing that, we don't hear them anymore. This would be actually honestly unnecessary if that's, you know, what we end up not getting the information. Let's hear them. We may not like what they're saying, we may like what they're saying, but at least it will give us some information to work with. And I'm sure that Epic M R A, you know, through their own narrative process will figure out where people are just being, you know, maybe being too upset. And even if they're too upset, it's still okay. We still want to know. I'm not protecting myself. Yeah, I, 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 I just, I, I need the information.
I think, I think asking the question about, um, so, uh, commission support, uh, supporting city staff and this turning that mirror on us is a fair question there. Moving on to a, uh, moving on to a bit of a different topic to get some feedback, because we haven't discussed this yesterday night. Um, we were talking about one of the three, the third suggested question was, um, asking about former coworkers who may have left the organization within the past few years. Um, it would be speculation. I think, I think, I think it would be fair, and again, I think, um, again, we could survey, um, former employees, uh, within a one to two-year range potentially. I think, uh, and getting that information from them also tells us then if we have a bunch of people who left the organization who are giving, for example, like negative responses, um, and then we also are able to look at themes in active respondents also, so we could look at those themes there also. So is it truly, is there truly a problem that is like leading into something? Okay, so we had a bunch of people leave because of X reason, but no one else seems to have a problem with this. No one else, I think surveying former employees would be an effective way to judge that. Again, like the words exodus of employees comes up, yep. Um, and again, it's the debate over whether that is something significant or not significant. Um, let's, we could just ask, and if someone's comfortable responding, they can respond. And again, we have employee, like all organizations, like all organizations, we have people who leave for positive reasons. New developments, we have people who leave for negative reasons or are required to leave for a different reason. Um, and again, this, like the data company Epic M R, which is essentially what Epic M R A, they're going to be able to pull those themes out to tell, uh, to give us insight into that. So I think, uh, sir, I think it would be prudent for us to, again, one to two year, going back one, two, to two years, having, uh, having that survey for whatever information might be available. We know that for a good portion of that time, exit interviews weren't conducted, um, just based on past practices. So again, we can accommodate for that, and I think that would be worthwhile there.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
So if I'm numbering this.
Yes.
I would say if number one is still number one, I would cross off number two?
Yes, anything in red.
Anything in red.
So then, okay.
Yep, just take it out, yeah.
I agree, I agree with you. I think we should, you know, we, we, part of the reason why we're doing this is because, you know, some of us were hearing that a lot of people were leaving, a lot of people were leaving. So, you know, there was a mass exodus, I sign, I like the word exodus, I should just use it frequently. You know, just, you know, so, yeah, let's, let's do that. And if we're going to do that, you know, if we're going to include, you know, people who have left, I probably would ask, you know, something like, you know, just to find out whether they were leaving because they were disgruntled or they were leaving because they found better jobs is, you know, I, I want to put a question in there that says, if given a chance to return to work in the city of Mount Pleasant, would you do that? If you're leaving because you're disgruntled over something, and then I say to you, so if you had a chance to come back and work here again, would you come back? And if so, why? And if they said to me, I don't want to come back here again, at least we know they don't want to see us again.
I think that's the purpose of these other questions. If it, if they answer the questions as the current employees answer them, then you'll find out. Do they have a problem? If it's a problem, what it, what it is?
It's, I mean, I will, I will defer to.
I don't, I'm hoping this is not a recruiting tool, but, but just a servant.
Recruiting, what I'm trying to find out is what, you know, so if somebody says to you, hey, you know, I left because I'm just simply disgruntled with the commissioners. If, you know, but if in the future there were, you know, there was an opening here, I would like to come back. Then the problem is not with the city, it's with us. And then you're asking them to explain why they want to come back.
The makeup of our commission changes a lot too, so we could, you know. If they say they don't want to come back because of the commission, it could have been the commission, you know, five years ago.
It could be, but we don't know. The, 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 the point is that they left and we don't. You know, yeah, this is where that whole issue about exit interviews, sort of, you know, sort of, you know, it's, it's, for me, it's the rub, right? Because we don't have any information, we don't have any data. People are, you know. So, I mean, it's up to you. I don't, either way, you want to put it, fine. You don't want to put it, I'm okay with it too. It's just a suggestion that if you're doing that, then you want to find out, hey, you know, um, since you used to work here and you left, might you come back?
Commissioner Rollins, um, want to get any, any feedback, any thoughts, takeaways from yourself here?
Not really.
Let's see, yeah, no, we're coming towards the end of, of available time. Um, let's see. Looking at all this, um, I have scratch paper notes and everything this late in the evening, um, and I'm going to set, uh, uh, send the video on to Epic M R A, but takeaways and everything that I have and everything that, let's see. Sounds like, um, we are comfortable with all employees are treated equally regardless of gender. Um, there was no question about that as far as topics go. Um, we wanted to complete every, there was a large consensus. It seemed like to completely do away with question fifty-three, um, about indicating your job description. We didn't want any kind of indication about job description, um, or classification. So we can, let's see, we have, how many years have you been with the city commission? Let's see.
The city.
With the city, city commission.
Seven years through the city commission.
See. Um, as far as questions, um, we could probably do away. Thinking about four, again, part part of what we're, uh, and this is again, what we're struggling, I've been struggling with this, I've been thinking about this, is that we are asking for biases, not just, we're, we're not just asking for what people's experiences are, but people's perception of things. Because oftentimes if people perceive that there's a problem, it's the same as if there was a problem, but it's too late into the night to open that can of worms.
I was going to say, everybody has a perception of the world.
If that theme continues throughout, that's if the.
I just don't think that we should target one specific person.
Uh, yeah, it's, uh, it's a role laid out in the charter as the most, and one of the most significant roles in the organization. So that's where.
But we're also going to be giving these to other directors, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they will decide on their immediate supervisor.
That's what I'm saying, include the commission. We may be account, I, we are accountable.
Managers' sense, we'll watch out for that rating there.
What?
Sorry.
What?
He's our direct employee. I apologize. I make bad jokes when I start getting tired. He's our.
Only employee.
Yeah. I think there's a fair amount.
You, you are part of sire of management, however you define it.
We'd appreciate, we'd appreciate a question about, uh, about the commission, turning the mirror on ourselves as well. We wanted to make sure years of service is in there. Let's see, unanswered question about unanswered questions becomes invalid. And I'm sure I could, like, again, if you read, I'm going to direct you directly to Kelly Sullivan, who's in charge of it. He could run you down on the technical aspects of it, of like, again, someone who works in the field, could, he could probably put more of your feelings at ease there. Um, like, see.
Can I ask a question about a specific one?
Certainly.
Number fifty-nine. So say we change male, female, transgender, non-binary. What's number five?
A gender.
A gender.
Let's see, male, female.
Non-binary. I think non-binary is the same. Could be considered the same.
Gotcha.
It's got to be male.
Male, female.
Yeah, we can update that.
Well, if you're trans, well, you're right.
Well, that's the thing is that, um, it's still valuable data to collect, and that's, and that's where it's difficult of like if they and, and that, it's, we would want to know if a transgender member of the city felt biased against within the organization. And that, and that's the trade-off there, I suppose. And I mean, I imagine that the, yeah, that, that is a difficult question there.
They could also choose not to respond.
I think that we should put a before that, I think that there should be something that says, um, these questions from here on out will not be reported.
Yeah.
But I still don't want that description.
Or, or just simply say they could choose not to respond, just give them the option.
Just kind of an update, like maybe mid-survey, like again, before these, um, like.
Before the demographic, let them say that's not going to be shared with the commission. I would really like to adjourn.
I would take that as a motion.
I will motion there.
Yeah.
Did we decide on, on if this is going to former employees?
I think, yeah, I didn't hear any major objections.
I don't know if the whole, the whole thing will go to former employees, but I think if they could put something together for former employees because not, that's not really, not all of it is relevant.
I think it's, um, in the interviewing former employees on the last page, it's discussed of like posing the questions to them as if it like, like, uh, higher, so they, they would have access to the full survey. Um, it'd be wanting to see like what tweaks or anything if they would recommend, but that, they wanted to lay out that action of like what that would look like. So we can, so we will get a feedback from them then.
My motion stands.
Yes, I, yeah. All those in favor of adjourn, um, adjourn, please say aye. Those opposed, we are adjourned at.
Almost ten twenty-five, it's fast.